Ms. Thompson, will you please take the roll? Sorry, here.
Can you hear that? Okay. Dr. Salvage?
Here.
Dr. Fellow? Ms. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Hilsman?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Osterling?
Here.
Ms. Gorypian?
Okay, we will, the board will convene to closed session. We have three items on the agenda. Government Code 54957.6. Conference with labor negotiators. Agency-designated representatives, Linda Waugh. Board President, Ross Salvage. Board Vice President. Unrepresented employee superintendent president. Government Code 54957.6. Collectively bargaining, PCC FA designated negotiator, Dr. Rajan Verdian, Superintendent President. Government Code 54957. Public employee appointments. Instructors, music voice, speech, language pathology assistant, philosophy, digital media, interactive design, humanities, dental hygiene, business counselor general for associate dean, special services counselor, EOPS, CEFYES counselor specialist, DSPS supervisor, creative services. And there is one appointment to be added to closed session under Government Code 54957 in public employee appointments, and that is Vice President of Student Services. Okay, we will now convene to closed session. There are, let's see, no reportable action items under closed session. Trustee Brown, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin tonight, I would like to take a moment to consider the violence that struck Orlando this past weekend. These incidents happen with troubling frequency across the country. And while they individually shock and horrify us, collectively they serve as grim reminders that hate has no place in our society. Our thoughts and prayers are with the families of those affected and with their broader families in the LGBTQ and Latino communities. Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. We will move to item B, introductions and recognitions. I believe that we have a recognition for Dr. Salvage. I want to congratulate Dr. Salvage on his completion of the Excellence in Trusteeship Program under the triple, the league. And the goal of the ETP is to encourage the continuing education of trustees in support of effective boards. So we want to present you with your certificate of completion. Congratulations, Dr. Salvage. At this time, I would like to ask if the, if the board has any revisions or items that they would like to present on the agenda? Or will you accept the agenda as presented?
So, Madam President, I had requested that we remove Agenda Item H. Make a motion.
So, I have a motion from Trustee Osterling to remove Item H. Do I have a second on that?
Yes.
Second from Dr. Salvage. May I have a vote from the, from the board? Press your votes. So, we have five ayes and one no from Trustee Hilsman. Item H will be removed from the agenda. The agenda will be reordered. Are there any other items? The agenda is accepted as presented without Item H. I believe we have some speakers on non-agenda items. No, we should, we should do the, yeah. I believe we have some speakers on, on Item H, but since Item H is being removed, why don't we call the speakers? So, Dr. Salvage, would you please recognize the speakers for this item?
We have speakers on non-agenda items and then...
Yeah, have the H people speak.
And the people that were here to speak on Item H, which has been taken off the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak right after we do the non-agenda people. Okay, the first non-agenda speaker is Martin Enriques. Mr. Enriques?
Three minutes.
Dear Honorable Trustees and assembled persons, I'm going to read excerpts from an email I sent to Kathy Smith and Tracy Thomas last 27 June 2015 after the accreditation visiting committee came to PCC. The excerpts include quotes from Walter T. Shatford's letter of February 12, 1992. He, Walter T. Shatford, was a fair-minded Republican and fascinating man to watch since 1982. He was judicious and deliberate. He was the conscience of PCC Board of Trustees who believed all should be treated equally under the law. In a time when it was fashionable to disregard the humanity of persons simply for their skin pigmentation, Shatford's egalitarianism was remarkable for its equanimity. His dignity and respectfulness for others was exceptional. He was a giant among men and women. In Mr. Shatford's 92th letter, he made some keen observations. "You," meaning yours truly, "certainly spent an enormous time and creative energy in coming up with your plans," referring to redistricting. "Two, considering that a redistricting plan is scheduled to last for 10 years, it is something well worth attention. Three, as I said before, working on your own with a difficult problem, you do rate an A for effort." That was almost a quarter of a century ago and three redistricting trusteeships ago. "The effort continues on my part. The stakes are higher than ever. Peace and tranquility and prosperity are threatened by the unconstitutional behavior done by official state actions against the populace who are constituents of the district. I have been patient and seen a pattern of behavior that is intolerable. I have been cautious in language until March 1215 when the accreditation visit heard community feedback at Pasadena City College. Among the multitude amassed at Westbeck Crusado Hall in the center of the arts was the board majority. But without visuage, I realize that much of what was stated seemed esoteric, but the essence of the message was conveyed, the unjust usurpation of the people's sovereignty and local affairs."
One minute, Mr. Enriques.
Supreme Court, thank you. Supreme Court rulings recited as support for the assertions made in early March 2015. What has been done is an affront to representative democracy. I am well-versed in American colonial thought, culture, history, philosophy. Additionally, I have more than a smattering of comprehension of the leading lights of the Age of Enlightenment writers wrote. I'm too painfully aware of the sacrifices of blood, sweat, and tears.
Conclude your remarks, Mr. Enriques.
Thank you for your attention. And you do have a copy of Walter T. Shatford's letter of 1992. Thank you.
Margaret, Margaret Castro.
Good evening, everyone. The reason why I'm here tonight is because I recently found out that, that the Disabled Student Center is now going to be offering quiet rooms for the disabled students to take a test. And I'm very grateful to hear that because I didn't happen to get that opportunity when I was here, coming to school here regularly. I had to take my tests in a room where timers were going off, there were toilets flushing, phones were ringing, the keyboard was tapping. Students, some students had Tourette's. There were so many things, distractions, that were going on. And as a disabled student, and according to the ADA policy, we have that right to have a quiet place to take a test. But I'm so very grateful because I spoke up and I insisted on having a quiet room to take my test. I have that right, just like any other disabled student. And I notice we have some veterans here that are probably also qualified for the Disabled Student Center. And they have that right, just like we do. But I'm very grateful that that change is now happening, that my voice was heard, that my insistence on having a room to take my test in a quiet environment was finally being heard. I'm very grateful that today, at the college that I go to, and I'm getting ready to move ahead, that I get that. I get a quiet room to take my tests. I have that privilege because I am a disabled student. And I get that. And I know that the college that I'm going to transfer to, that they offer that also. And I'm very glad to hear that these students, the ones that are here currently, that this change is going to help them to concentrate, to focus on what they're studying at this college. And it should have happened a long time ago. But this is also...
Please conclude your remarks, Ms. Castro.
This is also for the students that are coming in here. For students from all these departments that go and recruit to call it to other high schools and get these students ready to come here. They need to know that they have a quiet place to come and take their tests.
That's your time, Ms. Castro.
Thank you.
The next speaker who wants to speak on shifting funds from college assistant funds, I believe it's Sadera. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Thank you for your time. I just was reading through the budget, the PowerPoint on the budget, page seven, and looking at those, those shifting funds, that a large portion of funds, it's coming from the pool of college assistance, about $70,000. And then also looking at the student workers. And I know that Board probably knows that most of those employees are the ones who really deliver customer service at this institution. And so I was just very curious in how those funds would be allocated or reallocated in the future, or how you would meet the needs of the students and still deliver excellent customer service with so many reductions in the, the support for the students. So that is very interesting, and I'm really interested in seeing how that, those funds are going to be allocated and what's going to be, what's going to happen in the future when we have students that are going to need assistance, but there won't be anyone to assist them. Thank you.
Thank you. John Furman.
Thank you, Trustee Salvage, President Waugh, members of the board. I would like to speak this evening, not in my role as treasurer of the PCC Foundation, but as an individual, but to encourage the board to move forward with consideration of the bond measure in support of your master facilities plan. I recognize that the facilities plan is still a work in progress, and there is much work to be done. But I believe that the college has a rare opportunity to move ahead with a bond. It is large, perhaps larger than many would, would have thought reasonable. But I think the scope of the needs of the college and the scope of what we are being asked to do by the community, by the country, the role that community colleges are being asked to take on has substantially increased, has become much more important, and I think warrants that level of investment. I think overall, this is a good year to go out for a bond politically. It's a good year to go out for bonds financially. It's unlikely that over the next two or three years, the interest rate situation will get better than it is now. Most likely, interest rates will go up and it will become more expensive. I recognize that in past bond measures, we have been substantially more explicit about the specific buildings and the specific locations and the specific costs. But in fact, those cost estimates turned out often not to be quite as exact as we thought they were going to be anyway. So I think the fact that before any building is built, before any tranche of the authorized bond is issued, there will be full hearings with public input from the college community, from the community at large, with action by your board to approve every step and every action along the way gives us confidence that we're not signing a blank check, that in fact, we're looking at a long-range master plan, allowing the college flexibility to develop in the future, and trusting in you to make judgments along the way as to priority, as to order and precedence, as to location and the need, and to respond to changing needs over the next five, 10, 15, and 20 years. So I believe now is a good time to move forward with the bond, and I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Magdalena Castillo Torres. You'll have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Dr. Verdun, Madam President, and Board of Trustees. I'm Magdalena Castillo Torres. I'm a student veteran here at PCC. If we have the opportunity to pass this bond that is being put out there, it would, it would help us to get more disabled programs for our veterans. The only problem I see here is the square footage that we're being told. And so I hope that that can, that can be reevaluated and we can get more square footage so we can get the much-needed programs that we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Amador.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Verdian and Madam President. I actually bring greetings to you from Chris Villalobos, the smaller army guy. He's actually over in a paratrooper school. He wanted to say hi to you guys. I'm, I'm Joseph Amador. I'm the president of the, of the Veterans Club. We, I just want to let you guys know, we are very excited for this bond. Just the only thing that we had a concern with was we, the plans are to extend the VRC into our back storage room. And with that, we feel that the, the back storage room is about 600 square feet. And with that, we feel that we can only fit maybe two offices in there. And we would love to maybe have a sit-down and talk about the square footage. I think also during the expansion of the VRC, while our veterans won't really have a place to, to be, we were thinking of maybe mobile temporary buildings so that we have an inside-out space for our disabled veterans and our, our veteran students. Right now, Citrus College, Glendale, Cal State, they have over around 3,000 square feet for their veteran students. And they don't even have as many veterans as we do here at PCC. And, you know, we're number one in, in California for veteran services. We're number two in the country.
You have one minute.
And number seven in Marine Corps Times. And I think we all here like to brag about, I think we all here like to brag about how, how great we are and we're number one. And, you know, I really want to, I want to stay number one. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Smith.
Good evening. I'm a, I'm a speaker, a public speaker, and I'm scared as you know what. So this is unusual. Okay.
You have three minutes, so you can watch the light.
Good deal. Okay, so I put my timer on. Good evening, Board, the trustee members and also the president. I've worked in financial aid office, and I've been there for many, many years. And when I came here, African-American population was 8%. At this point, we're down to 3.8. We have roughly about 600 African-American males on our campus, but in overall, United States, we have 12% African-American population. Over 40% are in jail. This presents a problem. And our campus is a place where we can go ahead and change lives. We have, we're cutting back on financial aid. I work with financial aid in regards to outreach. My outreach efforts bring in close to $600,000 of soft money. This is not hard money. The employees that are working hourly in the financial aid office are supported off of soft money. At this point, we're cutting over half of those people off, including myself. Now, I'm not really concerned about myself, but I am concerned about my community. The northwest side is the largest population of African-American males and females. We also have a large population over at Pasadena High School. These efforts need to be continued. We have during the past year serviced over 7,000 students through our financial aid efforts. We have, we have serviced more students than any other school, Mount SAC, Citrus, or whatever, any schools around here. A number of you board members have seen me out in the community. I have represented the president, I have represented the vice president, and I have always been loyal to PCC. I've attended PCC, and I have a love for PCC. It's like a wife I can't get rid of. I am asking you to look at the practices of who is being let go in this office. I believe that some of the people who I work with are not treated fairly.
Yeah, one minute.
I believe that their expertise are not taken in consideration, that there's a possibility of favoritism. I believe that the, that we have over $200,000, from what I've heard, that are still fundings from last year that were not utilized. Our office needs to be reviewed, and I'm asking for you to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seiko Richardson.
Hi, good evening, Board of Trustees.
Kristin Hyatt will be next.
Okay. My name is Seiko Richardson, and I represent the class of the LVN Student Club. This is our president, so if I could allow her to speak first? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Bird. I am a nursing student here at Pasadena City College in the vocational program. We are on the CEC campus over on Foothill. It's not here, it's not on this campus. So we feel, as students, we feel rather isolated, and we feel we don't have enough resources. We have the most genuine instructors sitting right over there. And they, they teach us so much, and we just, if they had the equipment and the funding for that equipment and extra things for our program that we could use, we would, we would be phenomenal nurses. I mean, we, we can learn so much from them, but we don't have, we don't have enough computers. We don't even have paper. We, we're short-staffed a lot, and these people are overworked. And that is, it just doesn't seem fair to us. And we can, we see that, and we, we just, we feel like we need more things, like in, in our program and the RN program. And if we could be on this campus, that would help us greatly. We don't even have a library over there. We don't have, we have like TVs from like the 80s and videos from the 80s, literally. So it's like, we are very important. We're, we're representing like the future nurses. But, okay, now I'm nervous. I just feel like if we were on this campus, the program would be bigger, and it would be, it would make more of an impact on the students and our lives, really. And if we had like more mannequins, actually. We need the mannequins.
Conclude your comments, please.
I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Hyatt, followed by Thomas Berg.
Good evening. My name's Kristin Hyatt, and I'm with the Nursing Department at Pasadena City College. And it's going to be a hard act to follow these students. But we are here to just inform you that since the closure of the U building, and we had to move over to the CEC building, and all, our whole Health Department, Science Department, throughout different areas in the campus, we have really suffered a real lack of resources. And we've had to struggle. We've had insufficient, insufficient space. And just like the students have said, they really have no designated library. When they've, I frequently walk by and I see them studying out on the lunch benches and studying in the hallway. And the reason why we're bringing this up is because we know that there's the master plan of rebuilding the new U building. And we just think it's imperative that you consider us, the Health Science Division, and that we have a significant amount of input in this, and that we do get to move to the main campus. And we do, we are able to have input into getting a state-of-the-art facility so we can uphold our reputation, because we do have a good reputation in the community. We've, we've had to struggle for almost everything we've needed.
Please conclude your comments.
Okay, okay. Well, I just think that it's been kind of piecemeal, and that it would be nice if that we could, if you could consider us in developing the new U building in a state-of-the-art facility for the Health Science Division. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Berg, followed by Donna Nielsen.
Hello, I'm faculty in the Health Sciences Division. I teach nursing and I teach gerontology. I'm here to express my support for a new Health Sciences building. Every day, every day in America, 10,000 people turn 65 years old. The number and percentage of elders in our society is very, very rapidly increasing. And as a result of that, there will be increased need for healthcare workers. If we had a new building here on campus, we could have it very state-of-the-art. The technology that healthcare workers have to work with nowadays, we need to be, we need to be up to date on that kind of stuff, and a new building would allow that. Additionally, it would allow programming and outreach to the community. And as an example, the dental hygiene clinic could be located on the ground level and make it very accessible to the public, is one example. So I, we would like to also be back here. We'd like to be part of the main campus. We feel that's more, we're more integrated into the campus that way. Additionally, they have a library, they have food services, they have a lot of things over here that would be helpful to the students. So I ask you to support the idea of, you know, moving forward with a new Health Sciences So I ask you to support the idea of, you know, moving forward with a new Health Sciences building. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Nielsen, followed by Cecile Davis Anderson.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. I want to thank my students in particular for coming this evening. They were with me in clinical for eight hours. And because I said we were concerned about funding for a building for the Health Science Department, they said, "What can we do to help?" Those are my students. This is PCC. I just want to acknowledge them. Thank you. I don't know if you're aware of this, but we call this place "The Jewel", because it is. CEC building was meant to be a community education center. This was meant to represent the college as a rule, as a whole, our students. That's community education. Just a history lesson about myself. I've been a nurse for 40 years. I hate to say that, it makes me feel really old. But the reason why I'm a nurse is because I graduated from this program in 1975. I started here in the U building, which is now, you know, it's not supposed to be there because of earthquake safety. That was called "The Jewel" back then. It was the state-of-the-art. I was proud of that building. But then we were told, "We've gotta get out, hurry up and get out" because this earthquake safety issue was happening. They sent us to the CEC. Thank you for supporting us to the extent that you have, because we were able to get some mannequins, we were able to get some equipment. But just to reiterate what the students and the faculty are saying, we have what I call junk machines. I'm a nurse. You're not supposed to eat that chips, you guys. You're gonna end up in ICU where I worked for 22 years. Don't eat the french fries, don't eat that stuff, you're really gonna be sick. And so, they have, what, two or three places here to choose from to eat? These people sit and eat in their cars, they bring coolers, that's how they eat. Again, they do stand and study. We have portable classrooms. I'm sorry, but that's not what the Nursing Department needs. We need a state-of-the-art building with all the equipment that we need. We're gonna be taking care of you folks. Just saying. Okay? So, please support us. Thank you. Please support us. The community out there, they want us to have the best because they know that if we get the best equipment, we are the future. No, no, I'm not the future, I'm the past. That's my future right there. That is your future. Please help us get a state-of-the-art building. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecile Anderson, followed by Christopher West.
Good evening, everyone. I retired last year after 27 and a half years here at Pasadena City College as a counseling faculty member. Tonight, I'm here as a community member. And I want to say that I'm very excited about the proposed improvements to the campus that have been shared and discussed now for over two years with all campus constituents. I think we should move forward. When I worked here, up to the end of last year, I taught and presented in rooms that were quite dilapidated, dated, difficult to work in given the space arrangement of those rooms, board space, and flexibility of use of technology. PCC needs flexible learning spaces to allow for 21st century teaching strategies that include project-based learning, innovative ways of student collaboration, and interdisciplinary collaboration, to name a few. I won't go into what I was gonna say about the nursing program, but we, we need them back on campus along with really nice buildings for all of our CTE programs. Additionally, we've maxed out on space in the Student Services Building. We have for a long time now. And with the Triple S P legislation and other legislation, there's an increased need for space dedicated to counseling students and helping them to make the best choices and the best use of their time here at PCC. Students don't come to counseling or to PCC already knowledgeable about higher ed in the numbers that perhaps they did when we all started college. And they want, they hunger for dedicated spaces where they can be treated in a respectful and private manner so that they can truly engage in understanding what they're setting out to do. Safe spaces is really critical for that. And with all due respect to the expertise.
Please conclude your remarks.
Pardon me? Okay, thank you. With all due respect to the expertise and specialized experiences of the board members, I think we need to remember that the people who work here have expertise and specialized experiences and I trust them to make a good decision about moving forward soon on improving the campus. Thank you.
Christopher West, followed by Stella Murgah.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Christopher West. I am honored to serve on the faculty of the Social Sciences Division. When I was asked by Ruben as a faculty member, "What would I like in the new classroom?" So I made some humble suggestions. I wanted a raised platform, so when I arrived into the room, it simply raised to a certain level. I want an automatic smoke machine that happened. I wanted some pyrotechnics. And I was making these very reasonable requests and the consultant sort of whispers over to Ruben and says, "Who is he?" "Social Science Division." "Oh, okay, we got it." You've made a choice to hire 80 new faculty members, which means that for the next 30 years, you get an opportunity, maybe 15% of that instruction is gonna happen in the 54 hours, hybrid or online. But the majority of those 80 new faculty members are gonna be teaching in classrooms. What are those classrooms gonna look like? Do they offer flexible space? Do they offer an opportunity to make a difference? Do they offer an opportunity to inspire? Is the quality of your physical plant and your brick-and-mortar operation equal to the quality of what went through a process of 50 new hires? And if so, then go ahead and delay it or push it away. But in each of your constituent areas, and I can point to each of you and talk to a student, Curtis Darian, came here, transferred to USC, finished at USC, marched to School of Business as his father did and as his brother did, which tells me that your constituents are sending their children here. And if they're sending their children here, no matter what district they're in, what they want is the same quality of education that they're getting from the delivery of the faculty. And that means the physical plant has to improve. Is it an extraordinary bond measure? Of course, an extraordinary large bond measure. But the question is, so what does this campus look like in 2030? Is it gonna meet the needs of all the students that you're bringing in? What I would offer is that you've gotta make the choice. You've gotta make it now. And we've gotta move through the process of changing this campus. Thank you.
Stella Murgah, followed by Emily Byrd.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Verdi, and my name is Stella Murgah and I'm the founder and executive director of the Adelante Youth Alliance, a nonprofit organization in northwest Pasadena. Our mission is to educate and empower youth to develop their academic, career, and leadership potential. Each year, we produce two college and career conferences for middle and high school students. The Adelante Mujer Latina Conference for girls in the spring and the Adelante Young Men Conference for boys in the fall, with over 4,400 students each year. They have made these conferences the largest in the state. And we are proud to say that they are both held here at Pasadena City College. Thank you for hosting us for the past 22 years. Most of the young students who attend our conferences are first generation and it is their first time on a college campus. And that's so important. They get a feel for what it would be like to attend college and that gives them the motivation to graduate from high school and advance to college. For many of our students, PCC will be the first college they'll attend in their journey to a degree and a promising career. So we want their experience to be a positive one in state-of-the-art facilities, where they can be inspired to think out of the box. We ask our students to invest in themselves and I believe that our community would be proud to invest in PCC's expansion and upgrades. I appreciate having had the opportunity to attend some of the meetings, to hear from the architects about their plans for expansion, and have been impressed by how they have taken input from the community with respect to the elements of design needed to reflect PCC's community and its students. So you can see why, not only as the director of a local youth-serving organization, but as a 40-year resident of Pasadena, that I ask you to partner with the community. Allow us to take pride and invest in growing this great institution of higher learning by approving the proposed master plan project list and placing the infrastructure bond initiative on the ballot this year. Thank you and good night.
Blanca Rodriguez, followed by Alexandra Buckelheid.
Good evening, my name is Blanca Rodriguez and I work in the Health Sciences Department. I teach in the Medical Assistant Program. And I am here to reiterate what my colleague said earlier about the facilities that we currently work in. Because of the, our relocation to the CEC, we are now very limited to the number of students that we can enroll per semester. In my case, I can only enroll students for the fall. And so because of limited enrollment, we cannot provide the Health Sciences careers that we provide that are very high in demand. For many of our students that come through our programs, this is a second career choice. And so having the adequate facilities will allow us to expand our programs so that we could provide the education that is being requested of us to more people, more students. Like many of the instructors have said, we don't have adequate facilities, we don't have study areas, our students do not have a cafeteria, and nor a student store where they can purchase the necessary essentials that they need to go to class for that one particular day. Let's see. Also, as health care changes, it's made a shift into an electronic format. And so, because we do not have adequate computer space, computer lab space, we cannot provide this type of technology to our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alexandra Buckelheid.
Good evening. In my capacity as government relations representative for the college, I'm pleased to share a letter from Councilmember Tyrone Hampton from District One for the city of Pasadena. I'll work with Mary to make sure you get copies of this letter as well. The letter reads, "Dear members of the board, it is my distinct pleasure to lend my voice in support to the vision laid forth in the Centennial Facilities Master Plan. When Pasadena City College first took shape 90 years ago, the promise of a good education was not available to broad sections of our community. Over the years, residents across our region have fought for access to higher education so they could reap the benefits for themselves and their families. PCC has been a steadfast partner to these efforts, serving as a longstanding source of high-quality, high-value education for generations of Pasadenaans. I am thrilled to see this tradition of service reflected in the master plan under consideration today. By making major investments in its facilities for educating and serving its students, PCC is guaranteeing that it will be a resource for our region for at least another century. This means that hundreds of veterans returning from service to their country will be able to get the skills and education they need to find jobs and find their place in our community. Thousands of students will be able to save on college costs by attending PCC and transferring to four-year colleges and universities. Residents across our area will upgrade their skills and abilities to get better jobs and start new careers, ensuring that the economic output of our region remains strong. The investments under consideration in this master plan will pay dividends for all of us. I look forward to continuing my work with members of the board, administration, faculty, and students at PCC to realize the potential of this master plan. Together, we can bring the benefits of education to our community. I urge residents of Pasadena and throughout the district to join me in supporting these efforts and making this plan a reality. Yours truly, Councilmember Tyrone Hampton." Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the public comment for items not on the agenda.
Thank you all for coming and for expressing your concerns about facilities. I know the board is also equally concerned and we just want to have enough information so that we can make a good decision. Okay, so we now have on our, are on Item C, Board Docs Overview. Dr. Verdi?
I'm going to ask interim executive director Matthew Kiyamen to give us a demonstration of what the Board Docs will do and how our future board meetings, starting in September, will be board meetings that everybody will want to attend just because of the technological nature of the meetings.
In a prior board meeting, there was interest expressed about a paperless board management system. And so we investigated some solutions and we found Board Docs to be a leading solution. We looked at other community colleges as well. Board Docs is being used at approximately half of the community college districts in California, so it's a popular product. And so we did some internal calculations that if we used Board Docs, what would be some of the benefits? We estimate annually, we would save or reduce our paper consumption by approximately 100,000 pages, which is great. We expect to also see a cost savings net in using this product. And we're not, we're not even calculating the efficiencies that we would see internally in developing the board agenda. And so without getting into too much details myself, we've got Tom Duncan, who's the Vice President of Sales of Board Docs, on the line with us. He's calling in from Oregon, I believe. And so I'll transition it off to him to provide an overview of the product.
Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate that introduction and to the board. Thank you for, for hearing me tonight. We're excited to have Board Docs working with Pasadena City College in the district there. So I'm gonna quickly go over what Board Docs does. I'll show you some searchability for the board and what the board, how the board will be able to use the system. And then we can conclude with any questions you might have. So what does Board Docs do? At the real essence of it, it's a very quick and easy way to create, manage, and publish any type of board-related document. And the nice thing for the board is you, you'll be able to view the agenda from any type of device. So an iPad, a Surface Pro 3, if you want to bring a laptop, it'll provide that type of efficiency for you. No software, no hardware to install. So that makes Matthew really happy. Board Docs, our company name is Emerald Data Solutions. We've been around since 1989, but we've been serving governing boards since 2000. That's when we developed the local, our solution with a local governing board. We work primarily with, with education. School districts, as Matthew mentioned, over half of the community college districts in California use Board Docs. We're actually over 1,900 organizations now using Board Docs nationwide. The companies that support us, really what this slide means is we are very invested into security and we're very invested into reliability. And then for the Board Secretary, we'll be having folks come out and train that Board Secretary in person. And then we'll have training experts available after the fact at no charge. We provide training ongoing because we want the users to really be masters of the users. So new board members, new staff or refreshers are always available. Board Docs, it's really a customer-centric philosophy here. You're gonna find it's the easiest solution to use, it's the fastest, 24/7 support. Our analytics show that nine times out of 10, a live person answers the phone. So that's big for the folks that are supporting this internally. They really don't have to support it. That's because they can call us and we'll, we'll help them at any time. That's a big reason why we have a 98% customer retention rate and so many of the CCLC folks use, use Board Docs. And we also partner with CCLC as well. So you probably actually use Board Docs if you've, if you've ever gone to the CCLC site. Document delivery, we, we use a very extensive security network to allow board members to have information that other folks within the organization might not be privy to, especially on a closed-session item. And it'll, based on your username and password and when you authenticate into the system, it'll be privy to know that you're supposed to see certain information. And then the search is really important. You're gonna be able to search from every location as well. And then you're going to also be able to search like information from all of our other two, nearly 1,900 entities that use Board Docs. And I'll show that search here in just a moment. All right, so I'm gonna just show a quick example of Cabrillo Community College District that uses Board Docs. So when the public or members actually go to the site, they'll see this. Obviously, board members will have more access, depending on their username and password and authentication of the system. It'll be really easy to find what you're looking for. Obviously, you can search from this location. Once you find a meeting of, of interest, you can simply click on that meeting and either view the agenda, print the agenda, or view the minutes. And you can also share this information as well. Viewing the agenda will be a Viewing the Agenda will be a very unique feel for you. This is why Board Docs was selected, because of the way that we actually go about providing you with an Agenda View. Instead of having a PDF, which is the normal thing that vendors do out there, we actually made this to be designed for electronic devices, first and foremost. So it's very easy to scroll through. You have your, your, your titles below the actual, your titles and the Agenda Items. So I can click on a register of warrants, I can look at that information, I can scroll through it, I can even see what the motion and vote was, so your action minutes or annotated minutes are involved. And I can also click on a supporting document. So for you Board members, this is what the view might look like. And then again, if there is a, if there's an executive content document, you would be the only ones that would see that. Again, that would probably pertain to a closed-session situation. If I click on another document here, another item, my view changes to the right with the item details, but I never lose view of the Agenda, so I can easily scroll through it. And then searching will be so much easier. I can search the word "action" just within this Agenda item, find what I'm looking for, and then when I'm done, I simply click the X button, and I'm back to my Agenda. So no back button, no screens to minimize. You'll also notice here, there's a goal attached to this Agenda. This was a big reason why we were chosen as well, because you're now going to be able to track Board Goals very easily. So I can actually click on this goal, and it navigates me to this library. And within the library, I have several different goals, and it took me to that specific goal. I can not only look at the content of that goal, but then I can look down and see how this goal has progressed from meeting to meeting, and what the action that has taken place on this specific item. And then vice versa, I'm able to click here, take myself back to the Agenda to look at more information. You also have the ability to manage your policies through the system. And with CCLC, who uses our policy tool, it'll make it very easy to collaborate and update your policies. And as well, besides the strategic goals, you'll have a general library in which you can put other information. Think of this as your non-meeting information, maybe a California Education Code here, as you can see, handbooks and manuals. All of this can be made public or private, so if there's information just for the Board to see, we can make, you can make that private internally. A few other things I'd like to show you as well is that you'll be able to take notes with Board Docs. Your annotations will be saved here within the system. And again, our commitment to security, these annotations are saved in a separate database from your actual Agenda or Board-related documents, which makes these truly private and, and, and which is very nice from a, and meets the adherences of the Brown Act as well. So these annotations can be searched. You can take an annotation at every item level, and you would be the only ones to be able to see them. Each of you would only have access to your notes, no one else would. And then whether you're looking at a policy, or you're looking at a goal, you'll be able to take a note from any location. And then the last piece of search I want to show you is, this is only for internal use only, but because we have the largest number of subscribers out there, 1,900, you're going to have access to all of those public documents. So if I wanted to type in "college promise," which is something you all know about with being in community college districts in California, it will bring up all of the times in which the words "college promise" was talked about, whether it was College of Marin, or whether it was San Diego Community College District, you now have access to that same information. So research will become even more easier as you go here. The last item I'll, I'll show you before we get into the, to the Q and A is live during the meeting. We're going to make it easier for those that take the minutes. And, and also, while they're taking the minutes, all of the action will be available for the actual public to see. So as you see here, we'll connect this to a scoreboard, so as a motion and a vote is taken, and then that motion and vote is saved, it will show up, so the, so the gallery will know who motioned, what the motion was, who, who presented the motion, who seconded, and how the vote occurred. Also, it'll show the preceding Agenda Items, as well as you can see here, I've set up a timer, too. So public comment, it can be used for public comment as well, and it can go from gray to yellow to red accordingly. And I think that'll be your quick overview of Board Docs, and I can leave it up to questions now. And Matthew, if there's anything else you wanted me to cover, otherwise, we could do questions.
Nothing on my end, I'll leave it to the members of the Board.
Questions of the trustees?
Yes, I, I had a question. Could you just explain a little bit, a little bit more detail of security features? I'm particularly concerned about the, the closed sessions, because there may often be human resources documents there, and we want to make sure that those are absolutely secure.
Yeah, absolutely. So right now, you see I'm in a back end. I'm logged in as a person that would have what we call document publisher rights. So first thing, if, if I had a closed-session item, I'm just going to take this new item here, and I'm going to go in and click the edit button. The first thing that the Board Secretary would do is, it's always defaulted to access as of public, we're going to make this private. So number one, by making this private, the only thing that's going to be available to anyone else other than the Board and within that room is going to be the title. So if this was closed session, and I click save, so automatically, nobody would have, nobody would have access to, to, to this item at all. So the access would be, would, would be cut off to anyone. Now, to take it a step further, there is three different content levels here. There is a public content level, and I'll just collapse this to make it easier to see, public content level, which means when this is published, anybody will be able to see this information. While it's in draft mode, no one will be able to see it except for those that have the role, security role, to be able to see it. Admin content, that's another role within our system. This is usually relegated for legal counsel or maybe staff. So if I put a document in here, only those people with the admin role would see it. And then executive content, which is usually regulated to the Board members, Chancellor, whoever might, might need to see that information. So if I go into here and click into this area, I can actually drag and drop an attachment in here. And you'll notice that attachment has a little yellow key that's next to it, which means no one can see it unless they have the authenticated user role of an executive content member. So that's how that's regulated. So if I wanted to put in some information in here to the Board, "Board, please see Paragraph Three." Again, you would be the only ones that would be able to see that, based on two things, based that it's in this, this executive content area, and secondly, because I made it a private access in which no one can see it except for, except for the internal staff. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there questions from trustees? So I have a question. As the trustees are taking notes on Agenda Items, I know you said the annotations are private. Is there a way to gather the notes so that they can be sent directly to the Superintendent and President for response?
Absolutely. There's a few things we can do here. You can, you can, you can print off your notes and be able to print them, and they will be in chronological order. That's one way. And the other way would be to copy and paste your notes and then to share the URL, another way, with your notes and regarding to what that might be. Are you, you're probably talking about follow-up items, or is that, would that be the use case?
Or for clarification on specific issues on Agenda Items?
Yeah, absolutely. So what I would do in that situation is I would come in here, I'd take my notes, so, and my notes, I would, and just a real easy way to do is just copy those notes and then click Share, and then you're not going to be able to see it here. But if I clicked Email, I would then go into my directory, pick who I want to send an email to, it would send the URL, which specifically would send that person to this Agenda Item, and I could copy in my notes and be able to have a dialogue back and forth.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
So that means I'm, if I have 20 questions in 20 different sections of the Board Agenda, and if I heard you correctly, I'm sending him 20 different emails with 20 different links.
That's up to you how you do it. You can send one email if you'd like. That's really up to you on, on how you want to do it. We will give you the option to make that decision.
So there's a way that I can, my note here can be saved and my note in 19 other locations, and at the end, I can say, "Share all these with the Superintendent"?
No, you would not be able to have an action that says, "Share all of these to the Superintendent." You would have to manually go in and grab, and grab your notes, whether it's coming in here and printing these notes, and then sharing them with the Superintendent, or manually sending one email and grabbing all of your notes. But there is no automated way to do what you're asking.
So you could print them, though, as a PDF, and then just email that PDF directly to the Superintendent?
Yeah, absolutely.
I noticed on the voting, it just shows the, the tally of the votes, but it doesn't show by individual trustees who voted what their vote was. Is, is, is that set up differently, or can that be set up differently?
No, that would actually, so if we go here and make sure, it, it does. It shows the individuals, how they voted. So I just have some strange names in here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, but it shows the individuals. So not only will it show it there, but this is the nice thing about the system. When you actually save that vote, if we redirect, redirect back to Cabrillo College, and we look at an item that they had approved, and I scroll down, they don't have it at the bottom, but the motion and vote would actually show up, so they would actually see what the vote was in, in, in real time. You would actually see in real time what, what the motion was, what the vote was, and how people acted on the item.
Great. Okay. Well, I have no other questions. Do any of the other trustees have questions? So I think this looks pretty good. This is something that I think Trustee Fellow and I have been hoping that we could look at. So what would be the next step, Dr. Verdiyan?
We already have everything under control right now. Matt Kiamman has everything in line to have the first Board meeting in September?
Actually, we're going to shoot for August 17th. So we're going to have a comprehensive training session on the 16th for the internal employees, and then on the 17th, we will have training available for the Board members to help us launch.
Okay. So you have training on one time, or how is that going to work for the Board members?
We will have training just before we launch, but on an ongoing basis, we're going to have access to support for Board members as well as internal staff.
Okay.
So we know it's, it's going to be a change in the way.
Is it ever?
So we, we're, we're going to make sure that support is in place to make that transition.
So, one more question. So do we use this on our laptop, or are we going to have a talk to me?
You can use a variety of devices. In our cost estimates, we made the assumption that if we had to, we could provide a device for all of the Board members to, to access the Agendas and follow through, whether it's at home or at the Board meeting.
Thanks.
So I guess the, would this require then that, should the Board then approve that we are going to adopt this as a method, that we will receive our Board packages, or we could do this individually?
We will, once you let us know what you, we will put that on our Agenda for July, as to what document that you, what kind of, what do you call that item you would need, whether you need an iPad or a laptop, right?
That's right.
We're going to ask you for your preference, and then we will bring that item for you in July, so that we can have everything ready for you in August, for the Board, August 17th meeting.
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't remember of contract for this coming to the Board. Is this free?
When is the contract coming?
The contract was on the last Board Agenda.
It was on the last Board Agenda?
Consent Item 255.
Oh, consent item, okay.
Yeah.
Could you remind us of how much the amount was on there?
I believe it's $9,000 a year. There's a $1,000 implementation cost one time.
That's correct, Matthew. And that, and that includes perpetual software license upgrades and then 24/7 support, and that cost never goes up. We keep that grandfathered into that cost.
And I know several other colleges have done cost-benefit analysis on manual method versus the electronic method. Do we have those cost-savings?
I have the breakdown. I can send that to Dr. Verdiyan to forward to the Board members.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, so July, we'll see this then as a Board item and...
In July, we will have an item as to, I'm going to send all of you for your preference, what would you like to use? Would you like to use an iPad, or would you like to use a laptop, or would you like to use a notebook? Is that correct, Matt?
That's correct. We, we can provide a device.
And then we'll provide each one of you that item, yeah. We won't really need any approval from you, because we have all this equipment.
Trustee Martin?
So maybe this is future Agenda Items or proposed future Board meetings. Sometimes, we've only had one meeting in August. And I'm wondering if, depending, if there's a way maybe to have only one meeting in August and make the other meeting in August, that time block, the training session for us in this, in this operation. I guess no one else is worried about just jumping into it live without a, but he mentioned August 17th as a training date, which is one of our Board meetings. If, I'm not sure of the timing here, I can yield on that, but it just seems like it would be nice to have a time where we almost do a little mock meeting on a very simple Agenda and go through it once, but maybe, maybe that's not necessary. Maybe, as long as you don't have a lot of really critical items on the first meeting that we're doing this, or you have a Board paper backup for the first meeting, so we're doing it on this, but if I'm really in a bind, I can go find 255B back the old-fashioned way.
We can reassure you, Trustee Martin, that for the first meeting, we will have both, we will run parallel programs. We'll have the hard copy, and we'll have the electronic, so that we all can follow that first meeting, because I'm pretty sure that we have many people that will be involved, and I'm pretty sure that there will be some issues. So we will have both the paper and the electronic version going on at the same time. And maybe, we may have that for two meetings in case, to, to give every Board member an opportunity to become familiar with the electronic version of it.
I appreciate that, because I can just see us in the middle of some very important item, like finalizing the final budget, and there's all these numbers and all these things, and I'm like, "Okay, just a minute, I know I can find this."
Yeah, the, the parallel method is, is, is right on with our best practices, and, and the training is a two-day training. We do, we do see that our subscribers work really well. For the Board, you usually come in before the Board meeting, you know, an hour, hour and a half, maybe there's dinner or something like that, and, and we give you a nice training to, to get you into it. So it, it works really well. But the parallel method is a very good method.
So Dr. Verdiyan, if I may ask, that in July for the, the Agenda Item, that we also have the, sort of the implementation plan, so we know what's going to happen and the timing of that?
We will have a, Matt Kiamman will have the implementation plan with the dates and timeline ready for all of us, and at the same time, you'll get to provide us with your choice of equipment that you would like to use on that same day.
Definitely.
All right, Matt?
All right.
Thank you, Matthew.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Well, I've been looking forward to this, and I know this may be kind of scary, we're in new territory. I, I do use this, as was said, in the League. So the League uses this for all of the trustees, and we go through tons of legislation, so it's, handles it pretty well, I would have to say. All right, we already handled Item D on public comment, so we are now on Item, oh, on Item E. Right, we're now on Item E, Approval of the Minutes. I have a motion for the Approval of Minutes of Meeting Number 13.
So moved?
Moved by Trustee Hilsman.
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Brown. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I said aye. That's what you asked.
Six ayes, okay, none opposed, okay. No changes. Item F, Approval of Consent Items. Are there, we have a consent item 116P, which has been revised. It's in your packet. Are there any, any items the trustees wish to pull from consent for further discussion? If not, may I have a motion to approve consent item? If not, may I have a motion to approve consent items?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Moved by Trustee Osterling, seconded by Trustee Brown. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or push your button. Okay, I think we have six ayes. Excuse me. All right, we are now on item G. May I have a motion to open the public hearing on the adoption of the fiscal year 2016-17 tentative budget? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Martin.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Osterling. All those? All those in favor?
Discussion.
Okay, so now opened.
We're just moving to start the discussion, right?
Right. So is there any discussion?
Well, if it's a public hearing, point of order, if it's a public hearing, we should start by allowing the public to speak. And obviously, some have already done so.
Okay, but not on this item, right?
There should be, there should be public comment on each individual item.
Is there a public comment for this item?
There is.
We have no speaker cards for item G.
So are we going to do the public comment first or the presentation?
We'll do the public comments because I think we can ask the public if there is anyone that wants to speak.
Does there anyone, is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the board on this item? Haven't seen no public comment. We will close the hearing. Okay, proceed with the presentation.
I'm going to ask Joe Simonetti to give us the presentation on the tentative budget. Joe?
Very good. Thank you. Good evening, trustees. To start off with the presentation for the fiscal year 1617 tentative budget, I wanted to let the board as a whole know that on June 7th, the board's budget and audit committee met and reviewed the recommended tentative budget. The tentative budget authorizes spending to continue on July 1st, 2016, which is the start of the new fiscal year. Because this is a continued process through the finalization of the adopted budget in September, recommendations from faculty, staff, managers, the Budget Resource Allocation Committee, and others will be considered and as appropriate, will be integrated into the final recommendation. The final recommendation will be brought to this governing body on September 7th for recommendation and request for approval. In fiscal year 1617, the district will continue to see significant cost drivers. For example, we are seeing a $1.4 million increase in employer contributions to the CalSTRS retirement program and a $685,000 increase to the CalPERs retirement program. These increases will continue to rise over the course of the next five years. With the information that we have today, the district will see approximately $9 million in increased employer contribution expenses to fund both retirement programs through fiscal year 2020 to 2021. In addition, during fiscal year 1617, the district will be impacted by the reduction of Proposition 30 funding, better known as the Educational Protection Act or Account. The sales tax component of Proposition 30 will end in December, which will reduce revenue by approximately $1.8 million from this funding resource. So with those highlights, I would now like to turn you over to the PowerPoint presentation and walk you through the highlights. So as an overview, the purpose of the recommendation is to request approval for fiscal year 1617's tentative operating budget for the PACCD. The state of California's 1617 budget will be approved by the legislature no later than the end of June. So we do not have the final budget from the state yet. The governor has the ability to do line item vetoes. Therefore, adjustments to this tentative budget based on the approved 1617 state budget will be reflected in the district's 1617 final budget that will be brought to the board on September 7th. Approval of this annual tentative budget must be received by the chancellor's office no later than June 30th of each fiscal year and allows the district to conduct business and pay its operating obligations as of the start of fiscal year 1617, which is July 1st. So our 1617 Fund I and the tentative budget is primarily focused on Fund I, which is the unrestricted budget. We have other funds that are restricted by either categorical funds or grant dollars. Those dollars are meant to be used for the purpose that we get them. The unrestricted budget or Fund I allows us to do a multitude of things. We believe that we will be, we are estimating and projecting that we will begin fiscal year 1617 with a fund balance of $14 million. We are estimating that state and local revenue will be in the amount of $141,873,000. Federal resources will come in at just under $200,000 and state lottery funds will come in at $3.1 million for a total base revenue of $145,180,000. Plus the $14 million beginning balance will give us a 1617 general unrestricted fund balance and revenue of $159,180,000 and $453,000. So this slide is a presentation of what we've received in unrestricted dollars and Prop 30 beginning with fiscal year 1415. We had $148 million coming in. 2015-16, our current fiscal year, we had $160 million, but that included $12.5 million of one-time only funds. In 1617, we have a reduction down to $159 million. The difference of a little over $1 million is primarily related to the reduction in funding because of the sales tax component of Prop 30 ending in December of 2016. So our estimated projected revenue, new revenue ongoing dollars for fiscal year 1617, for access and growth, we have been provided our percentage of growth for next fiscal year by the chancellor's office. It reduced from fiscal year 1516 of 2.51% down to 2.36%, which is the equivalent of just more than $2.7 million. Operating costs, which is an increase in the base apportionment, we will receive an additional $1.35 million. As of a few weeks ago, we were notified that the state will not be providing a cost of living allowance, so we have $0 in that line of the budget. So ongoing estimated revenues is $4,077,889. And one-time dollars from the K through 14 mandate will be in the amount of $1.9 million for a ongoing and one-time fund revenue for fiscal year 1617 in the amount of $5.9 million or just under $6 million. The next few slides will talk about the increase of ongoing expenses to the district. The district in fiscal year 1617, the health and welfare benefit costs have increased moderately compared to fiscal year 1516. The highest rate increase was for our Anthem PPO, which covers the majority of our workforce. The initial rate increase was 12%. However, that amount was negotiated down to 6%. Throughout fiscal year 1516, the district's benefit committee has been reviewing a variety of potential plan design changes that did reduce benefit costs. During fiscal year 1617, the faculty, management association, and executive management agreed to contribute to their health benefit costs. The increase in benefits includes the 50 new faculty, which is the primary driver of all of the costs in fiscal year 1617, excuse me. Any additional modifications to the plan design changes will need to be subject to negotiations with the labor units. So just as an aside, in fiscal year 1415, our rate renewal was 18%. This year in 1516, our rate renewal was 12% and next year it is 6%. So the work that the benefits committee and the labor management groups are working towards, the goals that they're working towards are obviously working and are incredibly effective. This slide gives a breakdown of the anticipated increase of ongoing expenses and the cost of those ongoing expenses. So our 50 new faculty is part of the full-time faculty obligation number that we received from the chancellor's office and is provided to us based on our P2 report of FTES. So the cost of the 50 new faculty, including their health, just their health benefits, and employer mandated costs, the contributions that PCC needs to make on behalf of all employees, is $6.1 million. We have reallocated positions throughout the district by offsetting a reduction in management positions and allocating new positions. The offset of the old positions and the allocation of the new positions had a net neutral cost to the district. The healthcare coverage for the groups that are covered by the district, the classified groups, have an average of 6% in their medical cost increase and that cost to the district is $790,000. The CalSTRS employer contribution went from 10.73% in fiscal year 1516 to 12.58% in fiscal year 1617, which is a cost of $1.4 million to the district. And CalPERs, the employer contribution went from 11.847% to 13.888%, which has a cost of $685,000 to the district. We have set aside a amount of, the amount of $1.3 million for salary increases, $895,000 for step and column increases, $188,000 for potential Affordable Care Act costs. We've set aside $500,000 for any unanticipated expenditures that we weren't aware of or any emergencies that come up. And we've set aside $61,000 to transfer to other district funds to cover any increases for property and liability, our self-funded dental fund, child development. And then there were other lines in the budget for student, to support student and district needs that totaled a total of $505,000. So overall, the district has a $12.4 million increase in expenses to the budget. And just to go back, we had of ongoing dollars, $4,077,000 coming into the district. So we have a difference of about $9 million. So we made some recommendations on shifting of funds to close the gap. And in order to do that, we identified $1.9 million in the adjunct hourly line of the budget. $2.7 million was realized by freezing down classified positions that were vacant. So we will not be recruiting on those for the time being. These are, again, Fund I positions. College assistants and student workers, those lines in the budget were reverted back to the base budget for fiscal year 1516. And there is a total of about $600,000 that will be saved. This $600,000 is being offset by $500,000 that comes from the Department of Education to hire federal work-study students. So we have the opportunity, instead of bringing in college assistants and student workers, to utilize the federal work-study students and get the money from the federal government to pay them. We also did, we also reverted, reverted back to the services and supply amounts in the 1516 budget. And that realized a savings of $2.1 million. We had internal promotions, so we were able to defund previous positions when an internal promotion took place and they were moved into the higher level position. And we deferred payment for other post-employment benefits. In fiscal year 1516, we moved $1.75 million from Fund I into Fund?
64.
Fund 64. The projection this year was a $2 million need to cover the $1,440 cost for retirees and other benefits. General reserves, in order to balance the budget, we still had a $3.6 million gap between the money that was coming in and the money that was being shifted. So we have, we are recommending that we go into the general reserves for the district to close that gap. And that amount is $3.6 million. So we were able to shift 12.9 million. We needed 12.4. The difference of about $500,000 is to be used throughout the district for various services and supplies as they come up and are needed. Now, this slide is just a very high-level dollar amount that we are aware of as of today for restricted funds, soft funds, categorical funds, or grant funds. For workforce and career technical education, we are estimating that the district will receive $4.5 million. For deferred maintenance and instructional equipment, we are estimating $3.9 million, just under $4 million. Basic skills and student outcomes transformation program, $540,000. And Proposition 39, which is the energy efficiency funding, just under $900,000 at $887,000. So there's a total increase in restricted funds of $9.9 million. Now, tonight, again, is just to request recommendation for the tentative budget. When we bring the final adopted recommendation to you on September 7th, there will be further refinement of the final budget. And that is because we will have the final state budget no later than the end of this month. So if you don't have any questions, or I'd be happy to answer any questions, but if you don't, I'd request that the board approve the tentative budget for fiscal year 1617.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Probably should know it, but I'm not sure. Let's go back to page six. I, could you clarify to me what is salary increases versus step and column increases? Who gets, could you explain that?
Yes. So salary increases are the negotiated increases by the labor groups. The district and the labor groups have come to an agreement. That is the agreed upon amount for next year's dollars.
Okay.
The step and column salary increases is a classified employee has a six-step, six-step salary schedule.
Yeah, I got that. Okay, thanks. Now, on page seven. I was kind of trying to figure out what is the impact on, like, the instruction, the reduction that you said, the shifting, reduction, or what have you, the freezing and to defund various classified positions. What is the impact of these reverting, the next one is reverting services and supplies amounts to 21516? How realistic is that? And internal, well, that one is pretty clear. So in particular, those three.
Okay, so let me start with the reverting of services and supply amounts to the adjusted fiscal year 1516 budget. So when we establish a budget and the board adopts that budget, we have the adopted budget. And throughout the year, there are areas that have a need. They may have planned for a consultant to come in for the amount of $50,000 for business continuity plans. But the reality is that that's no longer a priority during the fiscal year. And we may need to move that $50,000 from the consultant line in that cost center to the college assistant line to cover staff shortages. So we're, what we did was we reverted back to the adjusted amount in 1516 for next year's budget because that tells us in budget that that's really where those dollars are needed. And there are fewer adjustments throughout the fiscal year.
That makes sense. Okay, the freezing and the defund of various classified positions.
Yes. So our human resources office was doing an excellent job with a number of recruitments. When we saw the final numbers from the May revision, or when we saw the numbers from the May revision, we saw that there was a significant, significant gap between the money that was coming in and the amount going out. And so one of the recommendations that we made was to temporarily freeze and defund any position that was vacant, that was being recruited, that was funded by Fund I. So by the time we bring the adopted budget to you, if there is additional money coming in from Fund I, we could revisit those positions and prioritize them and the ability to fill those positions.
But this was done only for classified staff?
Correct. Because the classified staff, the majority of Fund I funds those classified staff positions. I do believe that they are also looking at soft-funded positions or categorical or grant-funded positions as well. But tonight is primarily about the Fund I tentative budget. So that's why we just highlighted that line.
And what about the adjunct hourly?
So the adjunct hourly, in fiscal year 1516, it appears based on the numbers that we have approximately a 5% efficiency in the classroom. So if we have a full-time faculty person teaching a class that has 25 students in it, but it has a cap of 30 students, we're able to move 35 students from a class that's being taught by an adjunct into the classroom that's being taught by the full-time faculty. Overall, we had an efficiency rate of approximately 5%. That's projected for this fiscal year. So next fiscal year, we are being a little more aggressive about that efficiency rate in the classroom. And we're targeting 10% to be, we're targeting 10% efficiencies in the classroom, which will provide a $1.9 million savings in that line of the budget.
Thank you.
Trustee Selvich, I believe you want to address this?
Yes, I've got just a couple of questions. Then I want to make some comments on the budget, an audit committee meeting at which this was presented recently. If we go back to slide two, we start out with the estimated beginning balance of $14 million. And I have two questions. One, assuming we have no other information than what we have right now, the beginning, the ending balance for this year, the beginning balance of next year, you know, everything freezes just like this, what's the ending balance that would carry forward to the following year?
For 1718?
Yes.
We are projecting, without any over expenditures, a total of $10 million. Let's see here, $10 million.
So approximately $10 million.
What page are you on, Joe?
Yeah, it's like 10.5 million.
Now, there may be good news between now, what we know now and when we do the final budget or after the final budget and more money comes rolling in, perhaps goes to Fund I. Do you have any speculation? I know, I'm not trying to pin you down, but.
No, no, that's fine.
Might get better because you've just described a drop in about $4 million in our fund balance, presumably funded out of reserves. So.
Yes. So my.
How much better than that, or do you? Or do you think that's probably a pretty fair projection for?
I think our projections are conservative, but not by much. Between the May revision and the final state budget, there's been additional talk about moving, I believe it was 10 million dollars, from one of the reserved or restricted funded items to the base allocation for the system. If 10 million dollars was moved in, that would be, you know, 200,000 dollars for us. But we also have the opportunity for our recalculation. The recalculation that comes to the districts in February or March is the final calculation for the previous fiscal year. So if we have unfunded FTES this year, because we were so aggressive about growth and other colleges throughout the system were not able to meet their growth, the money goes back into the system and it is shifted to the colleges that have unfunded FTES. So there's a very small potential that we will have additional funding coming in from there.
And may, maybe a few hundred thousand or something.
I, I wouldn't venture to guess it would be more than that.
Okay, all right. So we're looking at maybe a 4 million dollar drawdown and it could be maybe only 3 million?
Possibly, yes.
Okay, right. I, I just wanted to be able to understand sort of the ballpark that we're going into the reserves and about the scale of the draws that we're pulling out of the reserves.
Yes.
And with respect to the Budget and Audit Committee recently, it was very thorough and a great presentation. We had a lot of questions, we got a lot of answers. And I'm going to sound kind of like a broken record and I'll ask trustee Martin and Osterling if they want to make additional comments. But the college really needs to think long and hard about how the continued increase, not just the calsters and calipers increase that Mr. Samanucci just described to us, but those are going to continue, not at this level. They're going to continue higher and higher and higher for four more years projected, I think?
Through 2020, 2021, so five more years.
Five years, okay. It's going to keep going up. I think the medical benefits are going to moderate just in general. None of these 20% or 15% increases that we saw in some recent years. So that's not going to be as bad. But that calpers and calsters obligation that we're going to have, excuse me, will be considerable. We've got the, excuse me, the other post-retirement benefits. And then on the revenue, so those are increased expenses. And we can see them coming. The revenue side, the Education Protection Act, otherwise known as Prop 30, which has a component of both income tax and sales tax. We've, it's been explained that the sales tax is expiring. So we're only going to have the income tax left. It's an income tax on high earnings and so that's very subject to the business cycle. So it's, it could be volatile and it'll get smaller. And then it'll expire. I believe there will be measures on the ballot this November to replace it, extend it, somehow come up with more revenues. But that's, that's what we're facing. Another point that I want to mention is that the Budget and Audit Committee emphasized the need for us to do the best possible projections we can, not just for the next year, but for the year after, the year after that, so that we're looking at just how big a gap or a wedge there might be, given the information we have today. It's all uncertain, these are all projections. But we need to do more along the lines of our projections going out into the out ears. So if the other members of the committee have any comments or questions?
So, Joe, what we, what you've just articulated to us is that we have budget expenditure line items that we know are going to increase on an annual basis. We don't know, most of our revenue comes from the state and some of it comes from student tuition. And we don't have any known source of revenue increase coming from either of those sources. So with the increases that are known in the costs without any corresponding revenue increases, at what point in time do our reserves sink below the mandatory, the state mandated 5%? And at what point in time do our reserves sink down to zero or below?
So it looks. So it looks as if in fiscal year 1718, the following fiscal year, we will have a beginning balance of 10.2 million dollars. And based on all the assumptions that we're making that we know probably are not accurate, but they are assumptions based on the information that we have today, the following fiscal year, we will have spent through all of our reserves.
Thank you. Two years. So we're about two years away from needing to make some significant adjustments.
That is if the new Prop 30, for lack of a better phrase, doesn't pass and if there are no additional avenues of revenue that come in, we have a significant challenge ahead of us.
And one of the things that we've heard at the committee and we've heard in board meetings, the need for the college to get more efficient, particularly with respect to the number of empty seats that we have in classes, that sort of thing, the enrollment and class management. That can have a very significant impact.
You're correct, trustee Selvich.
Trustee Martin?
Okay, so this is the tentative budget, which is just the placeholder working our way through. So I'm certainly in favor of all the hard work you've done here. I am on the committee, so I got to hear it for a couple hours and that really helped me to understand it. I would suggest that we have a few more budget audit committee meetings to stay up on it and kind of process all this as it's, as it's working forward. One of the things that concerns me is not in the PowerPoint, but in the budget, that was the physical document. And if you, page 13 of that document, there's a very nice summary. And we see that our reserves, as trustee Osterling pointed out, at the end of 1617 will be about 7.5 million dollars, which is the 5% required by the state.
Correct.
We've always had a little cushion over that in the past and that is obviously all going to be going away, which sets up why we'll be out of reserves for the following year. But what I didn't notice until actually, to be honest, just tonight and going through the other funds that you mentioned, was the nearly 2 million dollar that we normally are contributing to the post-retirement benefits that we are not this year.
Correct.
Because if it wasn't for that deferral of 2 million, the ending budget this year would be below the 5% required by the state. That's, that's certainly a canary in the mine that, that we have an issue we have to deal with. So, you know, there's no reason not to approve this tonight. It's the best we have at the moment. But I think we have to meet again with the committee and kind of stay up on this and say, what are some of the other options moving forward?
We will hold more budget and audit subcommittee meetings before the final budget comes to the board in September.
Any further questions? So may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
By trustee Hilsman? Seconded by trustee Hilsman. All is in favor, press your button. You have six ayes. Motion passes. Item I, self-evaluation of the Board of Trustees.
It is the time of the year where we have to start thinking of the self-evaluation of the Board of Trustees. What we do usually is we bring a copy of the Board by law, by law 2745, to give the board an opportunity to just talk a little bit about how we're going to handle the evaluation of the board this year. Last year, I wasn't here at that time, but I have, I studied everything that was done. At this point in time, the board put together a small ad hoc committee. And also, that ad hoc committee then started the meetings and decided on what kind of instrument the board would use for the self-evaluation. So it is up to the board now to maybe hold a brief discussion as to whether we will follow the same pattern as last. It does not require a vote of the board. It's just a discussion to give the superintendent president an idea as to what to put together with that board subcommittee.
So last year, trustee Brown was the president of the board and she appointed myself, as well as trustees Mann and Selvich, to the subcommittee. I've asked trustee Osterling if he would be part of the subcommittee and he's agreed. And I'd like to know if anyone else would be willing to be part of the subcommittee?
I'd be interested.
Trustee Hilsman? Okay, so it will be trustee Osterling, Hilsman, and myself.
So what I'm going to do, I'm going to ask Ms. Mary Thompson to set a date for a meeting, working with the three members of the subcommittee, to set a date. And then we can, at that point, start the discussion as to the shape and form the board's self-evaluation will take. Thank you.
Okay, we are now on the information items. Let's see, we have item J, the first reading.
Do we have to vote on it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right.
We don't have to vote on that.
Okay, so it's under an action item?
Yeah, we, I do apologize for that. We don't have to vote on that.
Okay. All right, so.
So it's not an action item?
It's not an action item. It was only for discussion. Right. We have some discussion on item J, the first reading of the resolution of the Board of Trustees. Community college, passing area community college, district ordering an election and establishing specifications of the election order.
This is just an information item. It's just for the board to take that information and review it at home and figure out later on whether we would discuss it and bring it forward with suggestions and discussions. It's only an information item, so it's the pleasure of a board whether they would like to have a discussion on it or just.
What is the pleasure of the board?
I think we should discuss it.
I would certainly like to discuss it.
Any, any opposed?
Yeah, I would just say that we're going to have an opportunity to, to discuss at length the merits of, of the, of the bond proposal. So I'm perfectly open to having a discussion about it. But I know that we'll be here till all hours of the night if we try to hash this out tonight. And it, and it may not actually be appropriate under the Brown Act, since it's not a, not an agendized action item. So that would just be my input.
So trustee Hilsman, I'm not an expert on the Brown Act. I know we are supposed to conduct our deliberations in the open. And even though this is an information item, we could discuss it in the open in a public forum? Yes or no?
Yes.
You can discuss and, we can discuss the item, but we can't take any action on it.
Right, understood.
Okay. Anything short of an action on it?
Okay, so as this is the first reading, is there, are there any comments?
Well, I have a lot of questions.
Okay, trustee Selvich.
And I. Some of them are observations, some of them are questions. On the first page of the, I'm going to make some comments and observations on the first page and ask questions. On the first page of the resolution, it mentions, whereas the board has received information regarding the feasibility of a local bond measure and the district's bonding capacity. And this number, which is mentioned earlier, which was mentioned on May 18th by the Lou Edwards consulting people, 888 million dollar bond, a table which we received after that meeting, which showed a 888 million dollar bond amount. Let's see, maximum financing term, it looks like, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven tranches. Seven different issues adding up, I guess, to 888 million. Total bond debt service, 1 billion, 844 million. So I'd like to stipulate that we're talking about a big deal here and it's a billion-dollar deal. This is the only, this, this one table is the only material that I have seen in writing that relates to dollar figures. And it came from, not from a financial advisor, but from an underwriter who has worked on previous bond issues. I don't know what their expectation is with respect to possibly being involved in this 888 million dollar bond, bond offerings in the future. But I, I'm pretty handy with dollar figures and all that. And I could not explain to anybody, particularly my constituents, clearly and unambiguously and with complete confidence what this is telling, what this is telling us. We've had no presentation about this. There's apparently, I, I've asked for if there was any other backup and this is it. So we've got a billion-dollar deal with one page of numbers, which I don't think tell anywhere near what we need to know about it, particularly those of us who are constituents consider to have a particular responsibility because of our personal expertise. And I also want to mention that we should have, I, I believe we should have retained a financial advisor well before now, back when we, back when it was originally, well, back when it was originally decided. This is about two months ago, maybe three months ago, when the idea arose that we should go for a November 2016 bond. I have, I had to answer a lot of questions in the last month or so by people about, you know, the facilities plan, you know, what they heard about that, the size, the cost, the idea of a bond in November. And one of the loudest voices, literally, that when I was having a conversation on the telephone with a mayor of a city in this district was, what do you mean, you don't have a financial advisor yet? I do not feel that we should move ahead with a target of a November 2016 election, not having retained a financial advisor well before now and not receiving advice and calculations, illustrations of debt service and this sort of thing, other than from somebody who is an underwriter and may well be expecting to do business with us on this very bond issue. So that's my first observation and concern. And before I get on to the additional questions that I have here, I'd like to point out that I am a supporter of doing a lot of work here at PCC. I know that we need a lot of work in various areas. I also, I've attended every single board meeting since I was elected. I've gone to every single public meeting that was held on the facilities plan. I'm a member. In fact, Bob Miller said that I was the chairman of the ad hoc committee, which has three trustees, two outside members, and staff to go over matters relating to the master plan as it's developed. I went to the presentations by the firms that wanted to do that master plan consulting work for us. I have done everything possible that a trustee could do to stay current and try and understand what we are doing, where we are, what the objective is. I am a full supporter of what we started doing. I am a full supporter of what we started doing, which is to retain HGA, to make it brief, retain HGA, go through all the meetings and working with constituencies, and also, as the plan originally called for, having study sessions with the full board of trustees at intermediate times before getting to a plan or a project list. But that would be the precursor to then the board approving a plan, the plan being presented to the community, to community groups, to constituencies, the kinds of people that I talk with all the time, members, other elected officials in the area, members of the business community, members of the education community, members of the chambers of commerce, et cetera, and just a lot of people who are taxpayers and extremely supportive of PCC, but also who want to know what their money goes for. What we seem to have done is made a reversal of having a plan, getting buy-in, and then deciding to put it on a ballot, to deciding that the plan is almost superfluous, that we need to go to the election this November because of unique, once-in-a-lifetime demographics that would suggest, according to our consultants, that there would be a very high likelihood of passing. I pointed out to the consultants when they came here that we got 70%, not in a general election when the presidency was on the ballot, but in a primary election in 2002, we got 70% the last time we went to the voters. So, you know, there's this exigency to hit the election this fall, which it seems to me has overwhelmed every other consideration. The few other comments that I have here, so I just want to make that clear. I fully support the idea of a facilities master plan to deal with facility deficiencies and work that we need to do here at PCC, and I fully endorse the plan that we've been following for over two years. I do not endorse the idea at all that we should go this November, and the people that I have talked to have been virtually unanimous, don't do it. They want to know what their money's going to go for. I do not accept the idea that being more specific than we have is going to tie our hands, limit flexibility, et cetera. To go on to a couple of other specific things in the resolution, see, whereas the local measure will include mandatory taxpayer protections, et cetera, this is a major concern. This is on the first page, it's the third whereas from the bottom. Mandatory taxpayer protections oversight committee, I know all about the oversight committees, and it says, be sure funds are spent as authorized. If we aren't at all specific in our statement to the voters about what we're going to spend this on, if we don't give them anything other than a shopping list that could describe every possible thing that could constitute a facility on any community college campus, there is no specificity. And so whatever is authorized is not something that the voters are going to actually have any say. On page two, one, two, three, four, the fourth whereas down, it says that the amount of the tax at any time will not exceed the Proposition 39 limit. I would like to point out that the $888 million bond that is mentioned in this resolution was mentioned by, it was the figure that was used in the survey, it was used in the analysis by our consultants. They explicitly said, go for this, it's, we've documented that you could, you'd have a high likelihood to get it. Well, that $888 million will be by a wide margin the highest property tax increase authorization in the history of La Cañada, Pasadena, and Sierra Madre. I haven't checked the other cities. But where it says here in the one, two, three, fourth whereas down, that we won't exceed the Prop 39 limit per $100,000 assessed valuation, you can be sure that it'll get up to that limit and it'll stay there. At the bottom of page two, there is a paragraph labeled section one where the $888 million figure is mentioned. And I was appalled that when I asked the lead consultant, when they made their presentation on March 18th, that they could not explain where that figure came from. So she said it was a placeholder, she said one thing or another. I just want to know before we close tonight where the $888 million. And there are people who very cynically have their own opinion and come up with that cynical idea about what it really might, what really might have determined that on their own without my help. On page three, again, it says, one, two, the third paragraph down, a paragraph A proceeds will only be used for the purposes set forth in the ballot measure. The ballot measure is so general that virtually anything at any time could be designated as what would fall under that definition, which is hardly any protection for the taxpayers. Item B on page three, it says, "The board has, in compliance with Property 39, established the projects set forth, evaluated the needs of returning veterans, safety, university transfer enrollment, trends, class size reductions, class availability, information technology, et cetera." I can tell you that I have attended every board meeting, every committee meeting, everything else that's had to do with this plan, and have spent countless hours evaluating materials. And I'm telling you, I did not evaluate the needs of returning veterans, safety, university transfer, enrollment trends, class size reduction, class availability, information technology, et cetera. It just didn't happen. As we move down to near the bottom, paragraph E, this relates to the oversight committee, a bona fide taxpayer association member. I submitted a recommendation, it does not give me comfort and it should not give my constituents comfort to know that when I submitted a recommendation for somebody to serve on this who had been born and raised here in the district, attended PCC, taught at PCC, Mr. Martin was one of her students, served as faculty senate president, dean, department head, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and who happened to be a member of the most recognized taxpayer association, she was turned down. The votes that turned her down are no longer present on this board, so maybe that's some comfort, but that could give taxpayers and people who are going to vote on this pause. On page four, the taxes levied, et cetera, will not exceed, I've already made the point that given the enormous size of this bond, that as soon as it will get to the limit quickly and it'll stay, I predict it would stay at the limit. Once again, on page A1, this is exhibit A, A1, we've got the $888 million figure, which I have no idea where it came from. On page B1, exhibit B, we've had some vets come here today and talk about what they would like to have, and I have supported since I realized myself and came to my own conclusion that the veterans clinic deal wasn't going to work here, and that was quite a while ago. I have been a supporter and pointed out at the very beginning that the expansion of our eight-hundred-and-some-square-foot Veterans Center by six-hundred-and-some-square-feet with money that has already been earmarked should be done as quickly as possible. But I want to point out that where exhibit B, page B1, talks to the voters about what this is all about, the very first thing they mention is veterans. I would like to point out, when you look at the square footage that we're going to have for our veterans here as soon as we get that expansion completed, and when you look at the square footage for the Veterans Resource Center that's identified on one of the PowerPoint slides that we saw, less than one-half of 1%, that is, less than one-half of 1% of the net new space that this billion-dollar deal would buy is going to go to Veterans Resource Center. And when you read this, it looks like that's about all we're going to do, like it's the first priority. That doesn't sound like an appropriate way to characterize a billion-dollar deal when less than one-half of 1% of the facilities that this would go for is for veterans. As a veteran, as a combat veteran, as a graduate of PCC, a guy who went, used the GI bill to get two of his three degrees, I find it cynical and even possibly offensive that we trade on the goodwill that veterans earned, putting their life on the line, spilling their blood and paying with their lives to call out veterans, 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 et cetera, when all you're doing is less than half a percent with all of this $888 million. On page B2, we've got veterans right up there at the top, 1,000 military veterans, we do not have 1,000 military veterans. I've looked at the tabulations going back six or seven years, maybe 800, and I note that in a publication that we put out called, I think it's Observations 2013-14, there are nine tables showing various characteristics of our veteran students, and one of them is the count. The count actually is a fall semester count and then it brings in, well, how many veterans, you know, are in the fall, aren't there any more, but new ones came in. That's interesting, it kind of pushes the number of veterans up. But eight other tables, when they measure how many veterans we got and how you can look at the veterans, they say fall semester, and that's the way virtually everything else in that document is tallied. So this exaggerates the number of veterans we got, it exaggerates the importance of this deal to the veterans, and, you know, I don't, I wouldn't mind if we maybe did a little more for the veterans. But advertising this, promoting this to the, to the, to the public, that this is like a big deal and, boy, this is all for the veterans, is misleading. The, let's see, the listed projects, bottom of page two, it mentions listed projects. Page B3 is basically single-spaced, one paragraph of every imaginable thing that could constitute a facilities at a community college. It even has bells and clocks. I wonder where the whistles are. This is, it has bells and clocks. It also mentions on page B4, "Certain of the projects described above may be delayed or may not be completed." Essentially, voters have no idea what they'll get or even who might make that decision, perhaps years in the future. We can't spend $888 million on facilities, except over, what was the list there, John? You had, what was the last tranche? Yeah, the last bond was going out 2035. For us to make a decision today, ask the voters to make a decision today, to authorize somebody with a, basically a blank check, to go out and spend it on what whoever they are in the 20 years from now might want to spend money on, is beyond comprehension. And it's beyond comprehension of just about everybody that I've talked with.
Okay, so thank you, Dr. Salvage.
Well, I've got a couple of other questions.
Okay, can we wrap it so that other trustees can have a chance to also speak?
Well...
So if you can quickly wrap it?
Well, can I talk after they've done?
Sure.
Okay, I'll finish after.
Trustee Brown, you have something?
Yeah, actually I do. I am actually, several things. Okay, so if I was the individual who submitted this resolution, I would be somewhere under the table, I would really take offense, just so you know. Okay. My, when I first read the resolution, the first thing that is, it is our duty as board members. It is our ultimate responsibility to look through this and be comfortable. I get that, and we all get that. That being said, I endorse the idea of us looking through this, getting some more time, and putting our arms around this opportunity, which we heard the community came out, we heard the faculty, we all know what PCC classrooms look like, it's not a secret. We do need work. We need to do some work. Now, it was very clearly articulated, the benefits, the benefits of moving forward were clearly articulated because of the interest. The interest means money for us. Now, we could take a document and tear it apart or do all we want with it, but at the end of the day is, does it make sense? Is this something we're going to have to do anyhow? I mean, we could go years and years and years. This project is going to be 10, 20 years. I remember sitting, and I remember sitting in a major P meeting while I was president, and there was a very upset group in there because what they had in the master plan, the space that were allocated for them in the master plan, of course, did not materialize because things changes. I think in the last meeting, they told us it was something that, it's a breathing document, you move back and forth. So if you are planning for years, I'm not an architect, and trust me, I'm scared to death because this is a lot of money, it's no question, but someday you got to make a decision. So we heard people come out here and articulated the fact that we need to make a decision. And as board members, we need to sit down, look through what, so we need more meetings to be informed? Absolutely. Arrange a couple of meetings. But please respect the staff, we need to respect the staff, we need to make, encourage our staff, don't let our staff believe that they're idiots, because that is, that doesn't go well. And I have a problem with that. So let's sit down, get the meetings, get the information that we need so we could make the proper decision. So what is the, what is the worst scenario? I've never put out, you know, bonds to be accepted to the voters, what is the, and I would like the president to ask me, to answer, what is the worst scenario? If we go to the voters and it's rejected? Because the voters have a brain of their own and they're the one who's going to say yes or no. So what would be the worst scenario? And how much would it cost us? So that would be my thing. Yes, we have, I pay taxes, we all have paid taxes here, so it's not just one group of people that are paying taxes, everybody pays taxes here, or kids. So I would like us to know what would be the worst scenario, that we go to the ballot and it fails? What would it cost a district to put it? Those are the things that I'm concerned of. And of course, getting more information so we can feel comfortable. But is this going to be three years or four years? By then, interest is up, we're up, and we lose, period. So that's my two cents. Could you answer the question for me?
How much it will cost you on the ballot?
And what it will cost for us to put this on the ballot and what's the worst scenario would happen? Let's say it doesn't pass.
The campaign will be run not by college money. We will fundraise that, we will work through the foundation, and it will not cost more than $235,000. And I don't know exactly how much the filing is, but the filing is about $4,000 or so, something like that. That's all the maximum amount of money that we will spend, which will not be college money, will be the filing fee, and the campaign will be run with outside money. No... No college time will be spent because we cannot do that. Administrators who will run the campaign will be taking time off, or they will run that after work hours. That's how it will work.
And what will be the impact if we go to the ballot and we don't win?
Nothing. We just, nothing.
Thank you.
Comments from any of the trustees? Okay.
So, yeah, I just had a couple of comments, just to answer a couple of questions that Ross had raised. The $888 million figure was explained to us that this was related to the bonding capacity. And I didn't understand bonds very well. I'm sorry.
I have something to the $800 million. When Executive Director Ruben Smith did a rough calculation using the data available from the state chancellor's office, using the program that is made available to us by the chancellor's office, he came to an amount that was roughly $1,600,000,000. Is that correct, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Now, we decided to go to around 80 percent of that amount because if we can do a good job, if we can leverage state funding, 20 percent of that amount can be obtained through the state when the state has money. We can leverage that amount using our bond money and have the state fund some of the projects for us if we can come up with that money. That we decided to go with an amount of just 80 percent of roughly what that amount would be, and it came to about 860, 870. And we just put, well, let's, I believe we were all together in the room, and he said, well, let's go for an $888 million. It was 80 percent of the total amount.
So just to add to that, and first of all, I should say that everybody who sits on this board is devoted to PCC and has the very best interest of PCC at heart. Even though we may disagree on some issues like this one, it's an honest disagreement, and it really doesn't relate to our, our working relationship, which I hope will continue to be, to be terrific. I, I did a little research about bonds, and I, I bought, we bought our house in 1993, so 22 years ago. And I would say our house, the assessed value, which is what the bond is based on, is probably assessed at about $300,000, which is probably somewhere in the middle of, of the assessed value of Pasadena, because if you haven't noticed, there's a lot of older people in Pasadena who's been in their houses for 40 years. So the maximum amount of, we hear about this big figure of $888 million, which, when you break it down over 20 years, is actually going to be issued in tranches, so it's not going to be immediate. But under state law, the most that I have to pay as a homeowner on my $300,000 assessed house is $25 per 100,000. So my tax bill will go up $75. Now, as a homeowner, I get a lot of advantages. I have Prop 13, I have my mortgage interest deduction, and as a, as a taxpayer and a homeowner, I'm actually happy to pay $75 for a terrific institution over the next 20 years. And Ross, I'll take you to Smitty's with the $75 that we're spending. I'll add, I'll add that to the pocket. So that, that's, that's kind of what the impact is going to be on the individual property owners. Now, there's another group, which is the non-property owners, who don't get the advantage of Prop 13, who don't get the advantages of, of the tax, but who are entitled to a fine educational institution. And the surveys that we did said that seven out of the 10 of the likely voters in 2016, this presidential year, would vote for a, would want to give money to PCC. They want to see it, over the next 20 years, improve and maintain its high status. So that's a terrific vote of confidence. Now, I, I'm not a big believer in surveys and polls, so I always, I'm skeptical. I think it can be squishy. If we look at the, by the way, those are, that population is about 80 to 85 percent of our voting eligible voters. It's a very diverse group, young, old, white, minority, sort of low-income, high-income. Everybody gets a chance to vote if we put it on the ballot in November 16. If we move it ahead two years, first of all, less likely to pass because you have many fewer voters. The regular voters tend to be more, less in favor of funding things like educational institutions. So we need a 55 percent margin to pass this important measure, which is going to assure the future of PCC. If we get down, let's, seven out of 10 is 70 percent. If we take down 8 percent of that, or 10 percent, we're down to 60 percent. You mount a large, because there, there will be much more chance for opposition in a non-presidential year because it's going to be a less cluttered ballot. So you look at that, and we have a 5 percent margin of error. So it's quite likely that our chances are a lot less. You push it out to 2020, maybe it's a little better. But now you're looking at 20 years, so we're looking at 2040. We have EIR reports, we have four buildings that are, need earthquake retrofit. That's important to the safety of our students, if nothing else. So I would, you know, I've urged my colleagues, and they, they probably know my position by now, but I think it's critical, it's a historic decision. I'm going to respect whatever my colleagues decide, I'm going to support whatever my colleagues decide. But I think that it's a critical, critical vote for this board, and it's really critical to the future of, of our college over the next 20 or 30 years, and to all of our students, our 30,000 students, low-income, minority, immigrant, community members. This is going to be critical to their future. Think of all the tens of thousands of students who are going to come through here. Are we going to have them sitting in dilapidated buildings? Are we going to have them sitting in unsafe earthquake buildings? This is, this is a decision that we have to make. So I'd urge my, my colleagues to think very seriously about the implications, the risks. I appreciate the difficulty of the decision, but I think it's critical that we give it really our most serious thought. Thank you.
Trustee Martin.
Okay, I'll make a few comments to share my position. As with so many other decisions, you always have concepts, and then you have details. And I have a simple motto, concept down, details up. When it, so there's no question in my mind that conceptually, I'm in agreement with having a bond to support some of the improvements that we need. But we have to look at the details up. And in short, I can characterize my position as too much, too quick. The magnitude of the, of the decision requires, in many cases, the magnitude of the deliberation to be thorough and thoughtful. Any figure with six digits that represents millions needs a hearty deliberation, and I think, I'm not comfortable, not, I appreciate Mr. Salvage is so detailed. You know, just the way we came up with this billion, we don't really have a priority quite yet, the way we, the process it's gone through, I don't think has been vetted and analyzed thoroughly enough for an $888 million magnitude decision, at least for my comfort level, thinking back that our last one was $150 million, and how long that takes. A few other general concepts. We should make sure that whatever we're presenting, because we know we can, doesn't mean we who are supposed to be the best informed for our community, doesn't mean that we necessarily should. And we need to do something, but we have to spend more time in, in carefully prioritizing that and coming up with a number that I think is way more reasonable. I appreciate the way the, as trustee Hillsman pointed out, that the magnitude is $25 per 100,000. What happens as the bonds get bigger and bigger is the time for all those bonds to get paid back gets longer and longer and longer. This one single act of 888 million, if I'm reading the projection correctly, could easily obligate taxpayers to the year 2065. Now, even some of the youngest ones in the room, 2065, will still be paying down the final dollar amount because of one vote that happened by taxpayers in 2016. That's what I mean by a little too quick, a little too much, 2065. So I'm, obviously, another big piece in this consideration that will be significant in our prioritization is whether the state bond that we hope will fund the replacement of the U building is on the ballot and approved coming up. If that is on the ballot, if it does get approved, we know the U building's high on the list, that would afford us the opportunity to prioritize our things slightly differently, knowing that there would be some of those proceeds coming in. And that's a decision, just delaying this a single year, I think, would give us an opportunity to know that very critical piece in our prioritizations and say to the taxpayers, this is how careful we were with what we presented before you. I am a strong proponent of acquiring new properties, especially in the southeast district, where we have seen with our Rosemead Center, how successful it is, how critical that is to our ongoing operations and FTS funding, not to mention the reach-out that it's doing. And yet, just, you know, quickly looking at these numbers, you see a science building is $117 million, and in a complete satellite campus is only $54 million? Now, I'm sure there's a rhyme or reason to that. I don't get it. It seems like, you know, acquiring and maybe building a whole new satellite campus would at least be somewhat about the same as a new building, but, you know, I know there's numbers and math that the people that have done it. But again, just kind of being able to answer those high-level, simple questions is another example to me of just too much, too soon. And then, one small detail note in the actual writing, so if, it, it mentions in several different places about ensuring earthquake safety. Obviously, that would be a goal of one of, of what we would want to accomplish is retrofitting in. But we have to be careful how we advertise ensuring earthquake safety, because it seems like every new earthquake we get raises the bar of what proper earthquake safety is, because it's a different kind of earthquake than the ones we had before. And so when you get to the level of ensuring earthquake safety, I don't know, that's a pretty high bar for me. You know, improve earthquake safety, enhance earthquake safety, you know, I get that, but to, you know, ensure earthquake safety, I'm just a little worried we're overselling it because we may not know five, 10 years, much less than 2065, what earthquake safety is. So that's one of those just smaller, detailed wordings. I appreciate the people that have done a lot of work on this. I do want to make it clear that, to me, acquiring the property or acquiring the capability for that satellite campus is a critical piece in what should be included high up in the priority of the bond. And finally, I think there's a rule that we need to follow, that whatever we're asking the taxpayers to pay for, the tenure of the time that it takes to pay for it should not be longer than the, the, the value that the asset lives. So if we're building something, and it's going to depreciate faster than the amount of time it takes to pay for it, that's not a good financial position to be in. And some of the things I see on the list are improving or enhancing things that we've already just done in our last bond, which we haven't quite finished paying for yet. And I wasn't sure if, just as an example, you know, you got to resaw a football stadium every 10 years if you have artificial turf, that's just the life expectancy of it. Is it fair to ask people on a 30-year bond to pay for a 10-year turf replant that's only good for 10, as an example? You know, that's something maybe we have to handle under operations and save the money that we're asking people to pay for to go into, you know, more buildings and more kinds of things. I think we got to be careful with technology. If it's part of technology that will last for many, many, many years, then maybe that's justifiable, where to get the newest and latest, you know, computers that are good for three or four years and they're gone would not be an appropriate use, in my opinion, of it. So even though we have, you know, the license basically to almost do everything but kill in that description in here, as you pointed out, I think we got to be careful that we're asking people to finance the things that you can't finance except with long-term money. And just as one humorous final note, I did notice that despite the fact that we had an effort to include absolutely everything, we were very careful, we did not include the kitchen sink. That was non-listened. So you can't say it includes everything but the kitchen. Okay, that's, those are my thoughts. So to me, I'm in favor of the concept. This is too much, too quick. I think with the reputation that PCC has, I'm sorry, one final thought. With the reputation we have, we should, with a careful constructed bond with priorities, if we could take one more year, find out what's happening with the U building, we should, this district will support that. They will support it. You know, when we have the kind of percentages that we have, when, in the prior bond and all these circumstances, I'm not afraid a year from now to do it. I am afraid not to exercise the prudence that I've been elected to do, to wait one year and get the bond size down. 888 million just is overwhelming to me. I think we need to get the bond size down, I think we need to prioritize, and I think we need to do our due diligence, and I'm sure it's going to pass overwhelmingly. So that's my position.
Thank you, trustee Martin. Trustee Osterling.
Trustee, well, I'll go next and give you the prerogative to speak last. First of all, I would like to commend those on the faculty and the administration that have already contributed their ideas and efforts towards the Centennial Facilities Master Plan that we are in the process of creating. I also want to thank those that came out here today to speak eloquently regarding the need to upgrade our facilities, and I, and I agree with them. I support creating a Centennial's Facilities Master Plan with the objective that our facilities are sufficient in size, that we keep them up to date, that they're safe for our students, faculty, and staff, and they're configured properly to fulfill our mission to continue to deliver top-quality education in the global 21st century that we always talk about. I support a bond measure to finance the master plan once we've created it, and it's been thoroughly vetted by all stakeholders, including the trustees and our community. However, the CFMP, the Centennial Facilities Master Plan, does not yet exist, and it's not even close to being completed, and I'll come back to that a little bit later. And as such, it's extremely premature to be approving facilities for $888 million, and the total cost to our taxpayers, including interest, will be closer to $2 billion. We haven't done our homework yet. There is a playbook for the best practices to how to prepare, to finance, to design, and construct a facilities master plan. We created it right here at PCC when we implemented Measure P, which was passed overwhelmingly with strong support of the community, with a 70 percent-plus plurality. And I won't go through all of the steps that, that we used in that playbook, but I will summarize them very quickly. Number one, we need to have a vision for education in the future. We need to create an education master plan that fulfills that vision. We need to analyze demographic trends in our communities. What's the population trend for the community college-going age cohort? We need to consider the changes in the economy and technology and how that will impact the demand for our courses, CTE versus AA, et cetera. And we also need to consider how changes in education will be delivered in the 21st century. And as I listen to the speakers in the audience and our fellow trustees, it's clear to me that there's a lot of different things that have been articulated that we need to factor into that planning process, and we haven't gone through and done that yet. Once we have that education master plan, that will give us good guidance to create a facilities master plan that'll support the education master. a facilities master plan that'll support the education master plan. And that plan should look at the current facilities we have, the size, the location, configuration, age, technology, upgrades needed, new facilities that are needed. And to do all of that, we need input from the faculty, the administration, and the students on the strengths and shortcomings of our current facilities. We should then put together an RFP and select and hire a financial analyst who will be a fiduciary for us, for PCC, not somebody that is out there trying to sell bonds and make money. Evaluate the facilities that are required and help us determine the best strategy to finance the facilities, which will include a bond offering. And once we have a sound plan, we will get the support of a community. We started down that path long before I became a trustee here, I'm the newest trustee here, but I followed what was going on at PCC. We conducted an RFP process, we hired an experienced, qualified master plan consulting firm, and we selected an ad hoc committee of faculty, staff, trustees, and community to work with those consultants. And unfortunately, that master planning process was put on the back burner when it was somewhere around 10% to 15% completed, as best as I can tell. And it was because we were forced to deal with much more pressing, immediate issues. We all know what those are. We had a superintendent that departed in the midst of controversy and negative press. We brought in an interim superintendent, we selected and hired a great new permanent superintendent. Then we had to deal with probation, and now our superintendent is reconfiguring our entire management structure and replacing all of his direct reports. That's all important work, and we need to continue and stay focused on that. When I became elected to PCC, one of the things that I was really looking forward to doing was using my background in real estate development and as a teacher and urban planning to help us put together a Centuries' Facilities Master Plan and participate in all of the stuff that we've talked about. And I haven't been given that opportunity yet. My first exposure to any element of the master plan was the study session we had on May 18, which primarily consisted of a political consultant telling us if we put something on the ballot, it would be passed. And that's important to know, but there's more to us going forward and doing this than just that we know that the voters will vote for it. One of the things that we need to think about is that this master plan calls for about a 50% increase in the space, most of it on the main campus, which is already a dense and a tight site. And I think we really need to think through how much space we need in our main campus and in our satellite campuses, and we haven't really thought that through right now. The other thing that we need to think about is the demographics for the community college age cohort are actually declining, and our fellow community colleges are already experiencing a decline in enrollment. So we need to justify to ourself and to the voters a spending a couple billion dollars when we're going to increase our space by 50%, when there's a real chance that our enrollment could actually potentially decline. There's a lot of concern been expressed that we have to do this and we have to do it now. This is a unique opportunity that will never come again. And I think that that doesn't show good faith in our community, in our voters. I just got through with a campaign, and I reached out and I talked to thousands of voters, and there is a reservoir of goodwill and respect and understanding of the importance of PCC to our community. And if we approach those voters in a non-presidential election year with a well-thought-out plan, we'll get the same result that we got at Measure P, and that is, is we'll get a 70% favorable vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Osterling. Dr. Verdian would like to say--
I just want to make one simple correction in what you said, trustee Osterling, thank you very much. I am filling vacancies, I am not replacing my administrators.
And also, if I could just-- But I would like to comment, we're extremely glad to have you here, and I know the amount of energy that you've had to put in, you've had to face a probation that you weren't expecting when you came onboard to be hired, and the work that you're doing to reconfigure your staff, get a world-class team onboard, and get off of probation. And I know because you told me that you worked tirelessly for three months, night and day, to get a bond measure passed in Orange County, so I know the amount of work that it takes. And I would like to see you spending that work in a future election year and focusing at present at filling out your staff and getting us off probation and dealing with the structural budget deficit issues that Joe has already spoken about.
So just a point of, just a correction to Jim, and I appreciate your comments very much, Jim, and very thoughtful. Just one thing to point out is that if you want to put it to the voters, this is the year. Only one-third of the voters will show up in 2018. So if you really want to get the will of the voters, you ought to put it to a time when 85% of them are voting, rather than about a third. So that's just a, the other question I had for the chair was, my understanding is that in order for us to put a bond, to approve the bond measure, we need a, what would be called, I suppose, a supermajority of the trustees, is that correct? So that even if there's a, just for the public's information, even if there's a majority of trustees who would put this on the bond, a, three, let's see, two, three members could prevent it from going on, is that correct?
Three, yes. You have to have a-- You need to have a two-thirds majority, so five members.
Yeah, five members--
Five members must approve it. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Salvage, I know you want to finish up your thoughts.
Yeah, a couple of additional thoughts. You can tell that I've spent an awful lot of time on this, and I've talked with an awful lot of people, and they've talked to me. And, you know, I want to be able to comfortably and unambiguously endorse a bond for a well-vetted, prioritized master plan for PCC. I can't do that now. And what trustee Osterling was pointing out, the only figures that I have seen were the ones presented first on May 18, and that works out to a 50% increase in the amount of square footage on this campus, which is already one of the most densely built-out campuses in the entire state. I have got a constituent who has done a master plan on one out of every four community colleges in the state of California, and whose parents went here in a tent out there when they were repairing after the Long Beach earthquake. I mean, this guy knows PCC, he knows the area, he knows master plans, and he was just taken aback at the idea of a 50% increase. And in particular, because in the December last year ad hoc committee, it was understood that the master plan would be based on a 7% increase in the enrollment over a 15-year planning horizon. And that's despite the fact that the demographics indicate that our major age cohort, from which we draw the vast majority of our students, it's not going to grow slowly, it's not going to go flat, it's going to be down by 10% in 15 years. And that's, there's very little guesswork involved in that, because those people are already walking around, they're in diapers right now. And, you know, we know how many there are, and we know where they are. So, you know, my talking to people, and I want to be able to confidently tell people, yeah, this is a good plan, because everything fits and it's congruent, but 7% growth in enrollment, 50% growth in the, or increase in the square footage, I can't explain that sort of thing. And one of the, one of the things that I mentioned earlier was a lack of board involvement. When I talk to people about whatever we're going to ask them to finance whenever we do it, I want to be able to tell them things such as, what were the most important factors determining this finals project list? What alternatives were considered and not taken, and why did we reject those? What important information and input was obtained from the students, the faculty, the staff, and other constituencies? What unexpected issues arose during the development of this master plan that we want people to spend hundreds of millions of dollars building out? And then finally, what parts of the project are the squishiest, or the riskiest, if you will, and how are we going to deal with that? But I can't answer a single one of those questions now. And even if we had three, four, five more meetings, it's not a matter of the trustees sitting through another briefing and another presentation. I was enthusiastic about the plan, which involved the board appropriately at stages during the development. I know that there are policy calls that will be made in the development of a plan, going from the most general sort of criteria that we talked about back in the beginning, which was the last time the full board said something specific about this, you know, sustainability, we're not going to go north of Colorado, we're going to check out our properties on green and historic preservation and this, that, and the other access. But, you know, beyond that, the board hasn't had an opportunity, as we go, to even determine for itself if some of the calls that are being made that are generating this billion-dollar, $1 billion, $61 million cost estimate and 50% increase in our square footage. So there must have been some calls that were made during that process that would have involved policy matters that the board would want to have a say about, and I didn't have the opportunity. I want to have the opportunity, and I want to have a good plan to present to the community, and I have gone out there and I have campaigned to raise property taxes before and been successful right here in this area. And I want to be able to do it again here. I can't, I can't do it with this yet.
Okay, any other comments? So, here's my thoughts. I think that I've not prepared anything so eloquent as my colleagues, but I have heard what the members of our community have come out to say, what our faculty and our students have said, and I've heard my colleagues. And I think that both sides make some very good points. But I think that overall theme that we're hearing is that everyone is in support of this. Everyone thinks that we do need to go out for money at some point. So it's really not, do we need to do it? We all agree that we want to support that. We all agree that there are facilities that need to be remodeled, that we don't have sufficient facilities for our students. We've seen the deterioration of our classrooms, the lack of equipment for our students to really succeed and for our faculty to really be able to perform at their best. And so we do need the money to do that. Does every single dot need to be, I need to be dotted, and every T need to be crossed? I don't think so, because I think, as I pointed out, you know, these are living documents, and we progress, but you have to have some sort of framework. And I think that's what we had in Measure P, is that, as, I wasn't on the board, but I heard from my community that there were a number of outreaches made in the community to explain to them what they were getting. I know that each of us have had an opportunity to place representatives on the Measure P committee to make sure that the bonds were being spent, the money was being spent, at least within a framework that we all understood and that we agreed was the priority. But I don't, I myself don't think that we have had, I don't, I'm hearing from others also that we have not had enough information, and that we do need to move forward and to, but we still need that information so that we can all be on the same page and that we can all champion this together, instead of trying to drag some along who are not really, and aren't really there. So since this is the first reading, my recommendation would be that, you know, that we could go forward, but we do need a lot more meetings to make this happen. But if the president and the administration feels that there's not sufficient time to give enough briefings, and we could do weekly briefings, someone had suggested that, you know, maybe it takes weekly briefings up until the time that we get this together to get this information out and to make people feel like we're on solid ground, then maybe this does need to be delayed. So, as this is the first reading, I'm going to leave it to President Verdian to decide, you know, whether or not we need to go forward. Any other comments? Okay, we are now on item K, Superintendent President's Report.
Well, thank you very much, President Waugh. I just want to remind you that when you approved Consent Item P today, you did eliminate Dr. Cynthia Oliver as Associate Vice President. You've now made her Vice President of Student Services. And we also have two new counselors who just joined us as a full-time faculty, Lily Tran and Talina Serupian. And I thought there was somebody else also, but I don't see the person now.
There he is.
Oh, yes. David Steinman. You are the new Director of Creative Services, Supervisor of Creative Services in the Strategic Communications Area. Again, congratulations on your new positions, and we wish you plenty of luck at Pasadena City College. Last Thursday, trustee Salvage and I had the opportunity to tour a U.S. Navy submarine. We spent a whole day in a submarine.
This was not a tour. We went underway, and we went underwater.
Oh, yeah, anytime.
Anywhere.
There you go. So we understand the language of submariners now. And I want to thank the USS Pasadena Foundation for giving us the opportunity to tour the submarine, not to tour submarine, but to take a trip on the submarine. We were out for about nine hours on that submarine. Oh, it's beautiful, you should do that, trustee Brown, one day.
All you see is the inside of a submarine when you're submerged.
I was pleased yesterday to have the opportunity to address the Sierra Madre City Council at the invitation of trustee Osterling. And Sierra Madre City Council was the last city council meeting for me, and I will start a new round of visits with the city council starting this fall semester, because I have promised all city council that we'll come back and share with them what we have been doing at Pasadena City College. I'm also proud to say that we were all very glad to see Board President Waugh featured in a profile written by the Community College League of California. And the profile said, and I quote, "Linda Waugh exemplifies what's best about the unique cultural dynamism and important civic, economic, and broad educational mission of our community colleges. A tribute, a true tribute to your service, Board President Waugh." We thank you, and we're proud to have you on our board. And we just learned today that the city of Pasadena has recommended our proposal for a grant of $25,000 to the city council for approval at the meeting on Monday, June 20. The grant, one of only two selected of an award through the Pasadena Assistance Fund, will support peer mentoring services of Project LEAP, the college's mentoring program. So once more, congratulations to Dr. Oliver's team. All right? Other good news from our faculty and students. I did mention to you a couple meetings ago that our dental lab technician program had a 100% success rate at the board exam. About one-third of the students took a specialty exam, and guess what? Another 100% success rate.
Excellent.
And finally, I am thrilled to highlight another success by our computer science students involved in the NASA Swarmathon Challenge. This is the program run by Professor Jamal Ashraf, in which students experiment with programming small robots. Three PCC students have been chosen to receive all-expense-paid trips to the Robotics, Science, and Systems Conference at the University of Millersburg. and Systems Conference at the University of Michigan this weekend. This international-renowned conference brings together researchers and practitioners in robotics to discuss new directions and new horizons in the field of robotics. David Wu, Xianmei Lei, and Alex Logsu were all chosen by the University of New Mexico and NASA from a field of students from 24 schools involved in NASA Swamathon to attend the competition at the University of Michigan. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Verdi. We'll go on to the shared governance report. So welcome, President Russo.
Oh, thank you so much. Hi to the Board of Trustees and President Trustee Waugh. I wasn't able to address you last meeting. Thank you for having me. And in our last couple of weeks with our board, we've been working on communication skills, you know, team exercise, leadership building. And we've turned our primary attention to transportation for the upcoming fall. It's going to be a big topic for us, looking with Metro, negotiations with Metro, as our previous ITAP contract has expired, and we're looking at a pilot program for a universal transit pass. The fee will be increased, but we will still have subsidized fees, which will still be great for our students. So, yeah, that will be the end of my announcements. Thank you.
Got a question?
Sure, Trustee Selvage.
Right, yeah, on the passes, how does it compare, excuse me, with what we had?
Right, so...
Number of units or how much the cost is?
Right, so right now, what we're looking at, the units before was full-time at 12. Right now, we're looking at doing eight units. So it does put it down. We were hoping that there wouldn't be necessarily a unit count because part-time students is what we're trying to focus on. But it would be eight, and then the prices, I don't have the exact numbers on that, but originally, it's about 30 with the ITAP, and now it's going to be about 76, 80, something along those lines.
Per semester.
Per semester, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Putner.
Thank you, President Waugh. We have no report for the MA. Thanks.
I see we lost Dr. Foster. So, Trustee Osterling.
I think everyone's heard enough from the trustees today. I'll put us out of our misery.
Well, I want to thank you for going up to Sacramento with the team to accept the awards. I want to thank the team for the award, actually, for all of your work.
Yeah, and Dr. Verdi, please describe the award that PCC won up in Sacramento and the group that awarded it.
It was for excellence in transfers. We were ranked number two for special transfer celebration. And the group that was involved with that was the Civitas and the, what's that called? Transfer Campaign Challenge.
Well, congratulations.
I will say, the best part of the trip was I got to sit next to Dr. Verdi on both ways on the plane. We had a lively discussion.
Great, real treat. Trustee Martin.
Come report.
Trustee Selvage.
To follow up very briefly on Dr. Verdi's report about our voyage on the USS Pasadena, its nuclear power attack submarine based in San Diego, and it's about 25 years old and has maybe another six or eight years left on its service life. But this is the fifth time I've been out. I've been a member of the USS Pasadena Foundation for a long time. One of the things that they offer civilians who occasionally get to go out on one of these little day cruises, if you will, is the opportunity to put on some coveralls and crawl down to the end of the torpedo tube and write your name on the inside of the door, on the other side of which is a lot of water. And somehow, somehow, the president superintendent didn't take them up on this offer. I've done it myself. If you go out again, Dr. Verdi, and it will be a requirement. It's a very interesting thing to do.
It can be a picture where you said, where presidents fear to tread. I'm tempted to say trustees rush in.
Yes. Perhaps you were, perhaps you thought I might pull the trigger.
It's a phrase, you push the wrong button at the wrong time.
Trustee Hilsman.
All right, I'll second Jim's. You've heard enough from us from tonight. Thanks.
Trustee Brown. Just really quickly, I just wanted to remind everyone that June 27th, Laxta has their final meeting for this board, and it will be at Alhambra Unified. And Trustee Osterling will be sworn in as incoming director, so congratulations. I know you'll be absent, but congratulations. I also wanted to report that I've been part of the Senate Pro-TEM's effort to move forward on Senate Bill 1050, which is higher ed for all, and it allocates additional money for any of the K-12s that have a large majority of underserved and underrepresented students. And it allocates money that opens up about 10,000 slots for the, at the UC level and another 15,000 slots over three years at the Cal State level. So we're really, we've been getting daily reports that this has gotten great support throughout the legislature, so keep an eye on that. With that, we will adjourn. Oh, 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 right. Oh, sorry, I always forget that. Okay, so the proposed future meeting dates, are there any changes?
Do you notice that in September, we have the two regular meetings, and then we have, I mean, we have one regular meeting, one study session, and then we have a fall retreat? Now, we have it here listed at 6:00 p.m., but I think maybe we should change that time to 10:00 a.m.? Or you want to do it at 6:00 p.m.? It's a Saturday, 6:00 p.m. I think it should have been Saturday, 10:00 a.m. Right?
That's the usual arrangement.
Yeah, right.
We have, we have one study session, we have one fall retreat, and we have one regular business meeting. If you want, we can move the retreat to a different Saturday in October. Is that something that we...
I think three is a bit too much.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I think that we should, I think we should...
We take the retreat out, and then we put it some other day?
Yeah, let's go, let's go through and poll the trustees for another date. We have only one meeting in July, one meeting in August. We could do, as Trustee Osterling recommended, maybe a second meeting in August. So why don't we have Ms. Thompson poll the trustees, and we'll try and find another date for the retreat? Is that okay with the rest of the trustees?
Now, the first meeting in September, you want to keep it as a study session, or you want it to be a regular meeting in September?
So the study session that you had for September was the one on the KPCC?
KPCC, yes.
APCC contract?
So if I can just highlight, excuse me, September 7th is the date that we need a business meeting for the adoption of the budget because we have to submit it to the state by no later than the 15th.
Okay, so then in that case, why don't we just keep the September 7th as a regular board meeting? It's already everybody's calendar, so September 7th would be the regular meeting, regular business meeting.
That's right. So does that mean that we will not have a KPCC meeting?
We'll do it on September 21st.
So then you're going to change the September 21st to a study session?
To a study session, that's when we'll do the KPCC one.
Okay.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Simonechi?
Yes, thank you.
Because he needs that for the budget, which we need to send to the state before June 15th.
Yeah, and I recommend that we try and have our retreat, so the board also needs to have a retreat, our fall retreat, and that's the time when we set our goals for the president and the college. It should happen probably before...
First week of October. That would be okay? Or too late?
I think it's too late. I think we want to try and do it earlier. So let's, let's have...
Let's, what, right, right.
Let's have Ms. Thompson poll everyone. Okay. So other than the changes, so the following changes are, September 7th, we'll have a regular board meeting, and then September 21st will be a study session, and we'll discuss the KPCC contract at that time.
And pardon me, what's the study session topic on...
KPCC.
Okay.
We can maybe even plan a retreat for end of August if it is possible, if it works with everybody as Ms. Thompson polls the board members.
That would work.
All right. Are there any proposed future agenda items for the board? Okay, hearing none, we will now adjourn. Well, I don't have my gavel.